Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Goh.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of March 2nd, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Goh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. At this time, Councilmember Smith will offer the invocation, and following the invocation, our new Director of Public Works, Greg Strakelous, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome from Naples, Florida, and we're glad to have you back. Please stand.
Father God, we thank you for this day, and we feel the burden that you've given us, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve. We ask for your wisdom, not only your wisdom, your love and your compassion as we make decisions. In Jesus' name we pray for these things. Amen.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, in the due republic, with the precious hands of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Welcome. It's great to see a full house. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, to the next item, please.
Public Statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written statements that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify the agenda item on which they wish to speak will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here on Consent Calendar Hearing Item 9A or 9B and Public Hearing Item 10A, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. Hearing Item 10A, the Fourth Public Hearing Regarding Redistricting Ward Boundaries, will be heard at 5:30 PM pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 21628C. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Goh, we've received 10 public speaker cards regarding Item 13A.
Thank you. And given the time, it's 5:29, and we'll be starting the redistricting public hearing at 5:30. We're going to have to move the public comments until after we hear the redistricting item. Madam Clerk, would you call that item, please?
Hearings Item 10A, Fourth Public Hearing Regarding Redistricting Ward Boundaries, will be heard at 5:30 PM pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 21628C. We have provided a staff memorandum transmitting correspondence received and additional maps.
Well, actually, let me just do a little preface. With this public hearing, speakers will be allowed 30 minutes. There's a clock on the TV screen behind me which indicates 30 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 28 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 29 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have a very brief presentation prior to receiving public testimony on this topic to just provide an overview of the maps that have been received and revised in this last week, and Brianna Carrier, Assistant to the City Manager, will walk through that quickly for us.
Great. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. We'll get right into it. Tonight, what we are looking at are, again, what Christian just mentioned, the edited maps since our last public hearing last week. We do still have all draft maps online on the city's redistricting website. What you have in your packets tonight are what edits were requested from council members from our last public hearing, as well as two additional public submissions. And we should have one map author here tonight to speak on the public submission 4A. So when public statement starts, they will have the opportunity to speak in more detail on that one. So again, things we're going to cover tonight, the revised draft maps that you have in front of you, the new public map submissions. We'll have time for public testimony, of course, and we're really looking for council direction, because as you'll see in our next slide, our timeline for the remainder of the process, these two yellow highlighted areas are essentially where we are right now. So this is the fourth public hearing. With the timeline that we have, you would have to take your first vote on final draft maps on March 16th. Those maps need to be made public seven days in advance, so truly no more edits can be made after March 9th, which is next week. So we have a very quick turnaround here, and that is the timeline that we are currently on.
Ms. Carrier?
Yes.
We don't have copies of the map. Would you be able to provide copies, please?
You?
The Vice Mayor? Oh, the Vice Mayor would like a copy.
Vice Mayor, I believe you should have a copy of all of the atlases in your blue memo. All right, no problem. You can have mine.
Go ahead.
Yes, always have extras. So we are all set, and we're going to just quickly go into a summary of the maps that we have, essentially that we are looking at at this point in the process. So of the maps that we have asked of our consultant redistricting partners, these two maps follow the baseline map from Draft Map A. So we have two edited maps that have come from Draft Map A based on council feedback last week. These maps still unify the northwest part of the city. They keep the development in the southwest part of the city together as well, taking into consideration communities of interest in downtown, and both have three Latino citizen voting age population wards. So those are the two maps provided by our consultant that are from the first initial set that our consultant made. And the following, the maps beyond this are the publicly submitted maps. A quick summary of those maps, we have here what we're calling Public Submission 2B. So this is the update from last week's Submission 2A. This map includes delineation between Wards 4 and 5 at the river in the south or in the west, western part of town, also takes into consideration downtown community of interests, has two Latino citizen voting age populations, minority-majority wards as well. For Public Submission Number 4, this one was submitted yesterday, and another update, the presentation should actually be 4A, because we do have an updated version of that included in the presentation tonight. This was submitted by a student. His name is Angel Ruiz. He's out of CSUB's GIS program. And his map, he's entitled New Bakersfield. It has three Latino voting age population wards as well, and he may or may not be here tonight. I wasn't able to meet with him before, and great. And so he'll have some time to provide some more detail on his thinking and development for his map. Public Submission 5, entitled The Unity Map, was submitted by the Jakarta Movement. It also has three citizen voting age population maps as well. Wards. Okay. Just to take a quick summary look of the five maps that we have edited from last week, Plan A2, your deviation there is 9%. Again, we would want to stay within a legal deviation below 10%. And I'll pause, Madam Mayor. Do we have a question? Great. So we have Plan A2, total deviation 9%. You can also see listed in the final column there which wards have an over 50% Latino voting age population. For Plan A3, a deviation of 9.7%. Plan 2B, a deviation of 6.7%. 4A, 4.5%. And then Plan 5, the Unity Map, 4.5% as well. And just something of interest to note, too, the other columns just show you where your lowest and highest populations are for each of those wards. That's what helps us determine our deviation. All of these maps are underneath the 10% deviation legal limit. So we'll get a look at what those maps look like now. This is the existing city wards. And scrolling through slowly, we have Plan A2. A3. Submission 2B. Submission 4A. And then finally, Submission 5, which is the Unity Map. And we will have these, you guys have these in your packets as well, and we can scroll back if you wanted to see any detail. We can go into that. But what I wanted to provide for this hearing today was a very high-level overview of the edits that we've received so far, a summary of the deviation and some of the minority-majority districts that were created between last week and this week, and asking for a bit of direction from council as we move along on our timeline. So council should identify a plan or plans to move forward to the next meeting with specific changes, if any, clearly identified. The final plan selection hearing will consider only draft plans that have been made public for seven days. Again, that would be March 9th, next Wednesday, if we're on the first reading and second reading to take place March 16th and April 6th. So I just wanted to end my summary presentation here again with that timeline, looking for direction for staff or a consultant for any possible edits before next week, because after next Wednesday, we'll have the maps made public. The following week at City Council would be your first vote to change the city's ordinance to adopt new ward boundaries, and then from there, second vote taking place on April 6th. I did add one last line there at the end, that the legal deadline for the city to adopt our maps is actually April 17th. The reason that we are doing the first and second readings on the 16th is the 6th is that's just how the council calendar played out this year. So with that, again, all of this information is on the city's website, so if anybody on the council or in the audience wants to see the detailed atlases and demographics, you can see them. They are under the city clerk's webpage. And that is the conclusion of my presentation for tonight. Hold for, if there's any additional comments from our city manager, city attorney. Great.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, how many people wish to speak on this topic?
We have received 14 speaker cards, two of which are from individuals that submitted or organizations that submitted draft maps.
Thank you very much. While there's a two-minute limit per speaker for a total of 30 minutes, we'd like to give this very important topic consideration and give those people an opportunity, those who have submitted cards already, an opportunity to speak. So groups that will be presenting a draft map have five minutes to speak on your presentation, and then individual speakers will have two minutes to speak. So first, I'm going to call on the public submission maps, and I believe we have the New Bakersfield Map 4A.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Angel. As stated before, I'm a GIS student at California State University, Bakersfield. My map, is there any possible way we can pull it up? No? Anyway, so when it comes to my map, I was able to draw a map that the population equality is 4%, which is 6% a lot less than what the law requires you to have. The law requires you to have 10% deviation. I was here to bring my map to 4%. When it comes to legal compliance, that's voting age population. I was able to draw three effective districts above 50%. I mean wards, sorry. So Ward 1 would be 59.6%. Ward 2 would be 53.7%, and Ward 7 would be 50.3%, right? When it comes to continuity, all seven wards are geographically contiguous, as you can see on the screen. Community integrity, that's, that would be ensuring that communities of interest stay together. For that, all communities of interest remain in their respective zones or wards, and their communities have not been split apart. So that's something that's, you know, very important, something that's important to me. I don't want to split any communities from any part that represents Bakersfield. For city integrity, my map keeps downtown whole, and the Lakeview are also kept whole. For identical boundaries, the current word, no, for identical boundaries, the current wards are represented as using identical boundaries such as the Kern River as a boundary between Ward 4 and 5. When it comes to compactness, Ward 3 and 1, they're the least geographically compact, as you can see up on the screen. And lastly, when I drew the map, I did it, you know, without having any discrimination against political party. The map was drawn based on communities of interest. It was drawn based on what I felt was best for the community, for the City of Bakersfield, for people that live here. Also, I drew the map based on Punjabi population. I drew the map based on Latino population, and I drew the map based on our brothers and sisters that are African-American. That's the main reason why I drew the map. This map is compliant within the law, Voting Rights Act, Fair Maps Act, so there's nothing for you to worry about any of those aspects of it. The map, I, to be honest, I think that this is the best map that has been submitted. It makes sense, it's easy, it's understandable, and you can see the boundaries quite well. When it comes to, to our protected classes, I would definitely say that, you know, our Asian population in Ward 5 and Ward 7, which is 14.9%, and in Ward 7, it's 13%, they are protected. That's something that I, like I mentioned earlier, I took into extreme consideration when I was drawing this map. Do you have any questions for me?
We'll address that later, so thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks so much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. And then we have one more group who wishes to present revision, and so that would be the Jakarta Movement. Ms. Carr?
About 5:00.
Okay.
My apologies, Mayor, the hearings normally are at 5:00, but sudden, for some reason, it's one at 5:30. It's going to be here at like 5:00.
Sure. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the next speaker? So speakers now, individual speakers will have two minutes.
Nick Hill.
Mr. Hill?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Nick Hill, representing the Kern County Black Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to submit to you, we'd like to keep southeast Bakersfield, Benton, Martin Luther King to Panama and similar communities. These are the major community, major black communities in Bakersfield, and they are low to moderate income families concentrated in these areas. As a result of these small populations of black people here in this area, it is important that these communities are not split between multiple districts so that they may have a voice in the electoral process. There are shared interests in the development of city infrastructure, investment in additional community amenities such as schools and small business in the community. This configuration also keeps AAPI, which is Asian-Americans, Pacific Islands, and Latinx COIs, communities of interest in east Bakersfield as well, southeast Bakersfield, and portions of southwest Bakersfield together. This district is also drawn with a majority of Latino citizen voting age population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. And now Jakarta Movement, are you ready? And I'll ask all those who are standing to please sit down for safety reasons.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Harveen Gode, and I'm the Kern County Community Organizer and Bakersfield City Organizer for Jakarta Movement. It's a pleasure to see you all here again today. I'm here today to advocate for our newly updated map. It's the Unity Map submitted by Jakarta Movement. We listened to comments from the council members as well as community members to reflect the needs of the community. While we know no map is perfect, we do know that if we put communities first, we can come to a better solution. Reflected in the name, I would like to emphasize the importance of unity, the power of the collective. We, when we as a community can come together as a whole, we can build a better Bakersfield for the future generations to come. I know you all, our beloved council members, want the same. Keeping this in mind, I would like to present to you a map that we feel would best represent and reflect our community. So while creating this map, we use the best practices by taking community input into consideration. We listened to many folks and took special care to listen to the Punjabi community who have sometimes felt unseen and want to keep their communities whole. We kept best mapping practices in mind, spoke to additional folks, and tried to best capture community needs while keeping compacted community and population balance in mind. Not only does our map look nice, it's easy to digest. The district boundaries we have drawn are in compliance with the Fair Maps Act, as well as follows easily recognizable geographical factors like major roads, the Kern River, the 99, 58, 24th Street, and et cetera. For example, District 4 is bound by Kern River, a boundary we all agreed at the prior meeting is very needed. In District 5, we have a significant, where we have a significant Punjabi and Asian population, we have the easily recognizable and busy streets of Gosford, Ash, as our boundaries, including those new housing developments which create opportunity for growth and economic enrichment for the larger Bakersfield community. Furthermore, if we take a look at District 7, we see it falls right beneath District Boulevard and also includes the Autumal as its natural extension as a remainder of the district and serves as a great area for economic prosperity for its residents. In addition to all the amazing benefits of this map, we have created three Latino VRAs as the law suggests, kept the Punjabi community together, and the historical African-American populations united in District 1 in southeast Bakersfield. We've also kept the communities of interest together in D4 by creating space between eastside residents with the river and oil fields. In D2, we are able to successfully maintain the VRA status following the Niles and Monterey Streets, all while taking into consideration the different populations that reside in the areas such as residential and commercial areas, all while taking in to consideration the demographics and socioeconomics of these populations. Our socioeconomic status, pardon me. While of course I hope the Unity Map is to be selected, I want to thank the city of Bakersfield for encouraging the public to get involved. For this purpose, I strongly urge you all to consider the publicly submitted maps except Map 2B. These are the voices in the community, and to support civic engagement, we must give the public's voice key precedent. Finally, we know that there are no maps that are perfect. If there are minor revisions, a street here, auto park there, we're willing to work together to come to the best solution that fits us all. As briefly mentioned before, I do want to express explicit concern about public submission Map 2B. This map disadvantages the Punjabi Sikh community extremely and has raised concerns over the last 24 hours when it became available to the public. The lack of straight lines and jagged looks seem gerrymandering rather than serving the constituents. So if there are any questions at all, please feel free to reach out to me and my colleagues. I can be contacted via harveen@jakarta.org. Brianna also has our other important contacts, as well as my colleagues' contacts. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. I hope you all will prioritize the needs of our communities by adopting fair maps and taking our beloved citizens, community members, and voters as well into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Ashley De La Rosa.
And just as a reminder, the remaining speakers will have up to two minutes, please. And would you also call the next one, just so they can be prepared, please?
Eliana Honeycutt.
Thanks. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, council members and Mayor Goh. I will be reading a letter on behalf of Linda Fidler. While working for the state senate in 2011, I was assigned to monitor the county's redistricting process. It was an eye-opening experience. Hours of explanation, maps, and data were presented by city council, by county council and senior administrative analyst. Community members weighed in passionately with their suggestions for equitable maps. They wanted county government to look a little more like the people they represent. It appeared that it was on a logical, rational path until it was time for supervisors to select and approve a map. I learned that what cracking, stacking, and packing meant in mapping and the two provisions of the Voting Rights Act, Section 2, Section 5 prohibits redistricting that dilutes minority voting strength. Kern County had one protected Latino seat at the time, but it did not take long to do a little of the math on my yellow legal pad and realize that based on the population numbers, there should be two protected Latino seats on the Board of Supervisors. When the senior analyst asked if there were any questions, I raised my hand and asked, since the Latino population is right around 50%, shouldn't there be two protected Latino districts? His response, you're wrong, Linda, it's not 50%, it's 49.2. I guess according to third-grade math, he was not obligated to round up. But since the Latino population was increasing more than four, by, more than 0.4% by year, by the time the maps were in place in 2012, it would be 50%. I call that a $12 million answer because that's what it costs taxpayers of Kern County. The lawsuits that challenged the redistricting prevailed because it was based on laws in place, and the selected map violated California's constitution, another Latino-protected district that was created, and the taxpayers lost $12 million worth of services during physical challenging times. The money could have gone towards upgrading the technology at our libraries, sidewalks, reducing garbage collection costs, or minimally filing some potholes. The Bakersfield City Council is set to approve their newly redistricted map soon, but I fear that they may be falling into the same slippery, expensive hole.
Ms. De La Rosa, your time is up, please. Bring your comments to a close.
Before I end, I would like to make a note that here in the public, we have tonight members that need translation, and there's no translation to be found. So if that could be a little bit more clear for our So if that could be a little bit more clear for our members to be able to participate fully in the redistricting process, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And then also just notify the next one after.
Eliana Honeycutt, and then followed by Lori Pisante.
Thank you. And just a reminder, please be seated so that we can have all of our aisles in the back safe for egress. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Eliana Honeycutt, and I live in East Bakersfield. And today, I wanted just to remind the council about how Ward 3 specifically is a textbook example of incumbent protection gerrymandering, specifically because I want to implore the council to adopt the Unity Map because it was created and is supported by the community. And currently, our maps reflect decade-old data. And not only that, but Ward 3 in particular, on these current and proposed maps that you guys have, there's a 112-foot strip of land that connects northwest Bakersfield and Norris and Fruitvale to east Bakersfield. Now, something to remind about this part is that no one lives in this area, and it's mostly a street and dirt. And so this 112-foot ismus is a blatant, and the sole purpose is to specifically benefit the incumbent in that district, Ward 3, Ken Weir, by disenfranchising the communities of color sandwiched between Fruitvale and City in the Hills. Furthermore, this is made more obvious by the extensive use of zero-population areas that allow the larger populations to be connected. One important thing to note here is that there's no community of interest that explains this configuration at all. Furthermore, population hotspot cluster analysis shows that areas of low-population concentrations, and so these clusters of unpopulated oil fields are in Kern River riparian and in the Fruitvale oil field. Another thing to note is that non-Latino white population is concentrated in the Norris-Fruitvale West portion of Population Center of Ward 3, and East Bakersfield Latino population is disenfranchised by the greater voting strength of the non-Latino white population in the far west portion of Ward 3. Now, since Ward 3 is a textbook example of incumbent protection gerrymandering, I would like to once again implore that this board adhere to the best practices formalized under the California Fair Maps Act and the Voting Rights District. And furthermore, it would be great if we could save the taxpayers' money in potential litigation, which we know is part of the reason why we're all here today. Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. Next speaker, please, and then just announce the following, please.
Mayor Goh, if I may actually, pardon the interruption, but for just a point of order. This hearing was not originally scheduled in our regular schedule for redistricting, and so we were not able to have translation services provided by a third party for this meeting. If there are individuals that wish to testify in Spanish language, we have staff that can translate their testimony on their behalf. And also, if there are a number of individuals who would like translation of the proceedings, we could provide that translation. If we're able to have individuals sit or locate themselves at a location in chambers, we could provide that translation for them. So if there are any individuals wishing to have translation services, we can accommodate that.
Yeah.
Para todos que requieren servicios de traducción, si podrían, por favor, avisarnos. Los que quieren traducción de sus comentarios de español a inglés, tenemos empleados de la ciudad que pueden hacer eso. También los que prefieren traducción de todos los comentarios, si nos podrían avisar ahorita, podemos acercarnos en un lugar aquí, en este cuarto, para proveer esta traducción.
Would you ask them to raise their hands, please?
Por favor, los que quieran ayuda, por favor, levanten la mano. Gracias.
Thank you. I think it'd be easiest just in that back corner if staff, if you could just rearrange yourself and people gather in that back corner for translation. The back two rows, I think. We might need three rows. Let's see how many people. Staff, can you look around and just accommodate the situation, please, those of you who are sitting over here?
Good evening. My name is Lori Pisante, and I am the Director of Civic Engagement Programming for the Dolores Huerta Foundation. You have now heard the statement of Linda Fidler from her experiences back in 2011 in the Kern County Board of Supervisors. The city of Bakersfield currently has a higher percentage of Latinos than Kern County had back then. You are in exactly the same position that you were in back then. And it is the case that Mr. Weir, who presides over the same district that my colleague identified as a textbook incumbent protection gerrymander, Chair of the Republican Party of Kern County, declared to everybody at the last hearing that it didn't matter that Maps 2 and 2A were illegal with deviations upwards around 19%. As soon as he had a chance to vote for that map, or some variation of it, he was going to move to do that. So I ask every person in the city of Bakersfield who is a registered voter to watch what happens at this hearing next and note very carefully who supports the illegal map that Mr. Weir suggested he was going to move to adopt. Secondly, the California Fair Maps Act prohibits partisan advantage maps. I ask officially on the record, if the city manager can make this happen, I ask for all maps submitted by Kathy Abernathy. By the way, that is exactly what everybody's calling that map that Mr. Weir has suggested we should move to adopt even before it was actually deemed to be legal. I want that analyzed for partisan advantage. I am asking for that to be done. Because if it is, it violates the Fair Maps Act, and this council should not adopt it or any variant of it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pisante. Next speaker, please, and announce the following one. And are we being accommodated in that corner with our Spanish speakers? Thank you.
Camila Chavez. Following Camila, it's Ricardo Del Hoyo.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Camila Chavez, and I'm the Executive Director of the Dolores Huerta Foundation. Our main office is located in downtown Bakersfield, and as you may know, we are investing over $20 million to construct the Dolores Huerta Peace and Justice Cultural Center at 21st and 8 Streets. We also have Vecinos Unidos, Neighbors United, member chapters in Bakersfield and Greenfield. We are committed to empowering community members to participate in the redistricting process. We've worked with over 5,000 people in the Equitable Maps Coalition throughout the Central Valley and the state at all levels of government. Our goal is to always ensure equitable maps are adopted. Redistricting requires us to make tough choices, and the law clearly tells us which choices to make first and how. The Fair Maps Act requires this council to make sure that maps have equal population, Voting Rights Act districts, and that the districts be contiguous. Only after these requirements are met can you try to meet other criteria like communities of interest, compactness, and easily identifiable lines. This means that while it would be good to keep Westchester and downtown together as a community of interest as much as possible and as a leader of an organization based in downtown, I understand why many people feel strongly about this. Three VRA districts must be drawn. The right map for Bakersfield is a map that draws three VRA districts and protects constitutionally-protected Black, Punjabi, API, and Latinx communities in those districts as much as possible. You now have multiple maps to accomplish this. The Equitable Maps Coalition proposal, the Jakarta Unity Map, New Bakersfield Map, Draft Plan A2, and A3. We ask you to advance all of these maps, and all those in favor of my comments, please stand.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please, and announce the following one, too, please.
Ricardo Del Hoyo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and fellow council. Ricardo Del Hoyo with United Domestic Workers. I'm also a resident of Ward 4. Councilman Bob Smith is my councilman. And I'm here to talk a little bit about redistricting and why we are in support of the Unity Map. I think about the need for diversity, you know. When I went to South High, you know, we were fortunate to have a principal like Lee Vasquez. And I think about the Kern High School Board and having representation with Mr. Vasquez as well. And I look at the Board of Supervisors and I look at the council, and I don't really see that much diversity. And so with redistricting, we're hoping that we can change some of that. We're in support of the Unity Map because it creates three districts that have the correct amount of what we call VRA districts with the amount of population that we should have 10 years ago. So as a representative of labor, you know, I represent close to 7,000 home care workers here in Kern County. Specifically in Bakersfield, we represent 2,645 members. These are folks that take care of our elderly. These are folks that take care of our disabled community. And we need more representation. We need diverse representation. And that's not to take away from the rest of the council and, you know, the people that are here today. It's just, it's a little different when you have somebody that looks like you representing you. And it, you know, it made me get involved. And so, you know, that's kind of the plea on behalf of the Unity Map. You know, the Central Labor Council, which represents a whole host of other labor unions, just last night endorsed the Unity Map. I'm not here on behalf of the Central Labor Council, but I am on behalf of one of the unions that was in support of the Unity Map. So we're here to hopefully get a good feedback from the council, and hopefully we can get a map that is responsive to the comments and to the community groups that have been coming to these meetings and have been attending workshops, have been attending a lot of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Delarosa.
You know, we have meetings every other week around 6:30, and so thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the next speaker and the following one, please.
Nayeli Aguirre Santojo, and after that, Cecilia Delgado.
Welcome.
Hola, mi nombre es Nayeli Aguirre Santojo.
Hello, my name is Nayeli Aguirre Santojo.
Yo vivo en la ciudad de Bakersfield.
I live in the city of Bakersfield.
Y apoyo el mapa unido.
And I approve, I support, the Unity Map.
Porque representa a todos los...
Because it represents all...
Los residentes de Bakersfield.
Of the residents of Bakersfield.
Justamente.
Justifiably so.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cecilia Delgado, followed by Augustina Rodriguez.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say that I wish that redistricting was as popular as the census. Unfortunately, that is not the case. I really wish we would have more people involved, but maybe within the next 10 years, we can make it more aware to everyone of this process. I truly support the Unity Map because it was created by a diverse coalition in Bakersfield, residents who use demographic data and their deep knowledge of Bakersfield communities to make sure our diversity truly is strengthened by the next 10 years. Please adopt the Unity Map. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Next speaker, please, and announce the following.
Augustina Rodriguez, followed by Marian Trejo.
Welcome.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marian Trejo.
Good afternoon. My name is Marian Trejo.
Yo vivo en la ciudad de Bakersfield, California.
I live in the city of Bakersfield.
Yo apoyo el mapa unidos porque refleja la diversidad.
I support the Unity Map because it reflects the diversity.
Y esta es una oportunidad que pasa cada 10 años.
And this is an opportunity that only comes every 10 years.
Y creo que principalmente están involucrados nuestros hijos.
And I believe that specifically our kids are involved.
Y para nosotros como padres ellos es lo más importante para nosotros, su educación.
And to us as parents, their education is the most important thing.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trejo. Next speaker, please, and announce the following.
Yolanda Partida, followed by Cecilia Lopez.
Welcome.
Muy buenas tardes.
Hello, good evening.
Mi nombre es Yolanda Partida.
My name is Yolanda Partida.
Vivo en Bakersfield.
I live in the city of Bakersfield.
Y apoyo el mapa unidos.
And I support the Unity Map.
Porque representa...
Because it represents...
...los residentes de Bakersfield.
The residents of Bakersfield.
Justamente.
Justifiably so.
Este es un proceso que pasa cada 10 años.
This is a process that happens every 10 years.
Por favor, escúchenos para el futuro de nuestros hijos.
Please listen to us in the name of the future of our children.
Hoy es un ejemplo el por qué se necesita.
Today is an example of why we need...
Representación. Gracias.
Representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Partida. Next speaker, please, and announce the following.
Cecilia Lopez, followed by Dolores Huerta.
Ms. Lopez, I think, had to leave, and so Ms. Huerta, you're next.
Good evening, members of the city council. You know, we have heard a lot of talk about democracy. We have seen what's happening in Ukraine right now, where people are deprived of their constitutional rights to have a government. Now, we're talking about the census. And when we're talking about redistricting, we're really talking about representation. This is what this is all about. And so that all the citizens and residents of Bakersfield will have equal representation. I was part of the project in the lawsuit that was filed against the Kern County Board of Supervisors because Mayor Goh was on the board at that time. And the county had to pay, as was stated earlier, millions of dollars to lose a lawsuit because they would not adopt a map that really represented, excuse me, that represented the people in the county. I spent many, many days in that courtroom when that lawsuit was being debated. And the county lost. They lost that lawsuit. We just want to say to all of you... We just want to say to all of you that you have a responsibility to make sure that the residents of the city of Bakersfield have fair representation. It's not that incumbents should choose who they want to vote, but it should be the citizens that decide who they want to vote for. So we're here to ask you to do the right thing, to act in the name of democracy and adopt the map that has been presented to you, the Equity Map. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
We have not received any additional speaker cards.
Thank you. And now, City Manager Clegg. I will close the public hearing at this time, and now go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I wanted to just provide a few observations about the process and also some of the maps that are before us prior to council deliberation. I think it's important for the council to know that behind the scenes, we've spent many, many days and hours crunching the numbers, looking at multiple different map iterations, both those provided by the community, other maps that we've produced in-house. This is a stack of maps that we've looked at. We've taken this issue very seriously and spent a lot of time looking at how to solve this puzzle in a way that addresses all interests. Specifically, we've made our best efforts to balance the most important factors expressed by council. Those do happen to be consistent with the criteria in the Fair Maps Act. And to use the analogy used previously, the big rocks in the jar. Council has provided feedback related to easily and clear identifiable boundaries, longstanding communities of interest, as well as doing that in a way that creates wards that are as compact and contiguous as possible. And then staff did ask, or excuse me, council did ask staff to look at maps that would address minority voter populations. Through the process, it's been very clear some of the challenges that we face in mapping. Many of the county islands that exist in the middle of the city make it very challenging. I think if you look at the county pockets north of the river, even Belteris, it's hard to work around some of these and keep contiguous and address all of the interests that are involved. I would also suggest just some of the topography and geography of the city and where the city limits extend. And the river as a key example, as an easily identifiable boundary, it creates some challenges in what some of the options might be. And then lastly, maintaining those communities of interest. If we're looking at downtown as example and locking in that community of interest, it changes what some of the other options are available to us. There hasn't been a particular map that we've been able to develop with our consultants that perfectly balances all interests. And I would say respectfully that we have yet to see a map from other public interest entities that addresses the minority-majority voting districts that doesn't pose some other challenges for other communities of interest. And some of those maps have challenges with easily identifiable boundaries, compactness, contiguous. I'm only pointing this out to say how challenging this puzzle is. We've appreciated the community feedback, really good input and considerations, but it's very evident that it's a challenging balancing act. So I just want to speak specifically to some of the maps that staff has worked on with our consultants in response to council direction last week. And again, it was, as we tried to work through some of the possibilities, it was very clear to me how difficult it is to deliver a map that includes everything that council asked for. So of note, keeping the downtown community of interest intact and the MLK Lakeview community of interest intact significantly limits some options for the downtown in particular. Where does Ward 3 go if we keep the downtown community of interest intact? Only where it has gone historically, and it starts to make sense why some of the boundaries are the way that they are. Also, our consultants were asked to create a map that creates three minority-voting population districts, but maintaining downtown, MLK Lakeview, and the conversation we had about the river as a north-south boundary. In the end, our consultants had to create two maps because it wasn't possible to keep the downtown intact and the river boundary and still get to that goal. The numbers just don't work, so they had to create two options. That's why you see A2 and A3. And while they were able to create those maps and create a third minority-majority district, that was only able to be accomplished with minority-majority populations of 50.3% and 50.6%. And I just point this out to demonstrate how challenging it is with our demographics to create three minority-majority districts. And it's only accomplished by having a trade-off with some of the other considerations that council offered up at our last meeting. Ultimately, I would just point out that all of the maps presented to council tonight are legal and in compliance with the criteria established for redistricting, but they balance those competing factors in different ways. It's a balancing act. There's pros and cons to the different approaches, and council has to weigh those tough choices, as was pointed out. I also just want to point out that all of the maps presented make improvements from, I think, historic maps that reflect our growing community. All maps presented tonight have a lower deviation amongst the council wards than in 2010. The maps in 2010 had a 12.8% deviation, and the deviations in our proposed maps range from 4% to 9%. Also, just as food for thought, all of the maps have a higher minority-voting population than they did in 2010. That's just simply the demographics of the city of Bakersfield today. I will use Map 2B as an example because it's the only one that has two Voting Rights Act wards as opposed to the others presented tonight. And the percentage of the voting population for Latino and Asian voters has increased since 2010 significantly in all wards, all seven. There have been three wards that have seen a double-digit increase to the 15% range, and the remaining wards have seen between a 5% and a 9% increase in the Latino voting population. The lowest increase occurred in Ward 2 that had only a 5% increase from 35% to 40% Latino voting population. So while we looked hard at the maps, there are some concentrations of Latino voters in the city, but one of the great things about Bakersfield is that we have notable minority communities spread throughout the city and all of our voting districts. So I think if the city were proposing maps that went in the wrong direction, that reduced the number of minority-majority districts, I'd be more concerned. If we were proposing maps that reduced those populations of voters, I would be more concerned. But would reiterate to the council that all maps tonight are in that right direction. But I would recommend to council that there is a need to begin to, both out of respect for the time that we have in front of us and the council direction we've received, we need to start to narrow our focus to some key considerations. And I do see there being consensus about the downtown community of interest, about the river roughly as a Ward 4 and 5 boundary. I think there's a lot of consistency across the board on those. And would just, again, reiterate what Ms. Carrier outlined earlier. As council begins deliberation, we're at that point where it's time to begin to focus in on preferred options that allow us to move forward in the next few weeks on the timeline that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. And now, colleagues, put it up for comment. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'll start. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who came out today and to participate. It was really great to hear all the different voices, and I appreciate all of you for coming tonight. Thank you very much. And I hope to see you often at council meetings. After hearing the comments tonight and seeing these draft maps, it's clear to me that we can see a map with three VRAs, and we ought to pursue that, and that needs to be a priority, given the fact that we're doing a good job at keeping some of these communities of interest together. My preference is that we move forward with exploring the Unity Map. I'm wondering if folks from the Unity Coalition can comment for just a moment on their map. I wanted to ask about this little dip we have in Ward 3 goes into downtown and kind of makes a bit of an awkward move that isn't obvious to community members. And so I wondered if we could, we had leverage to redraw that particular section and still remain consistent with our other goals. Is there someone from...
So those back area that where you see those two dips, on both sides, you'll see residential areas, and then that square that we have created is partly the more commercialized areas. And so we see that the demographics are quite different, which is why we split it off right there. So we're taking into consideration the socioeconomic and also whether it's residents or whether it's businesses.
So if it's more, I'm sorry, if it's more of a commercial district, we can change those lines without much deviation?
Yeah, we can certainly discuss, and you and I can meet as well, or whatever the process may be that we have due diligence. Whatever it could be, we can definitely explore readjusting to fit those needs.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Councilmember Gonzalez, anything else?
That's it for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, tonight, there was a few things said, and I just want to encourage us, excuse me, as a citizenry of Bakersfield to be looking to each other to unite and not allow division to come into our community. It's so important today in the climate that we're seeing across the country. I appreciate each and every one of you for being here tonight because it's important that we all participate in the process. I know each one of you are very passionate about how you feel about your maps, and each one of us here on the dais takes that very seriously. But I want to say that it was said tonight that the dais does not look like our community, that we do not represent the community by what we see, what you see on this dais, that there's not enough diversity. And I would say that we do have diversity on this dais. And I'm very appreciative of my colleagues in Wards 1 and Ward 2, and then I am the other diversity, because I'm the only female here, that represents our city. It was also said that citizens should, by Dolores and Mrs. Huerta, thank you for being here, that citizens should decide who they want to vote for. Well, my ward actually is 52% Latino. And when I was elected a little over a year ago, I ran against two African-American males and one Latino male, and then there was me. So we had quite diversity in my election, in my race, four of us running against. And I was the one, even though the color of my skin does not share the percentage of Latinos in my ward, I was still elected, I believe, because we share the same value system for those that elected me. So when we continue to look at just the color of skin for our city instead of what are our shared values and who is the one that's going to represent those values the way I want them represented, if we look at it from that perspective, I think we, as the citizens of Bakersfield, can be more united, can come together and start solving issues as a group of people instead of as divided groups of people. That's what my vision is for Bakersfield. That's what I think most citizens feel. And I just felt like tonight that we have to start having this kind of conversation with each other because the color of our skin and our ethnicity does not, should not divide us. We can come together with the same core values, and I appreciate that. So thank you tonight for coming. I really appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Ms. Huerta? Ms. Huerta? This isn't the appropriate time now to speak. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman.
I have just a couple of comments. The first was that...
Get closer to my camera.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The first with respect to the various maps, and I'm addressing my ward right now because that's certainly one of my major concerns, is we had a lot of discussion in our last meeting about the clear historic community of interest that are just undebatable between the north and south of the river. City manager just went over that again. They have different park districts, school districts, everything. Councilman Smith reiterated that. And I think there's only one map that respected that. So I was a little disappointed that anything but Map 2B respected all that discussion and all what's pretty well-established. It doesn't make any difference on the percentages of ethnic one way or the other, not enough for anybody to care. But those are clear. It's a good geographic boundary. It was historical banquet. It's a cultural boundary, a park district boundary. So I like to be because of that one item. There are a few other minor adjustments in some of the other maps to my ward, not all that significant. But my only other comment is I was bothered that, with exception of one map, the other map completely eliminated Ward 6 from all future growth forever. You talk about disenfranchising a group of people. To take one ward and pick it out of the city and say, "You can never have any more growth. You will never have the benefits, the economic benefits of the growth." Maybe that was overlooked, but this would be something that, that's just wrong. Right now, the existing maps in Ward 2B spreads the growth very equally across the southern part of the city, and all the growth is equally happening across the southern. From Ward 1, because the growth has certainly passed to the east side of the freeway down Panama Lane, we have all of the affordable housing, and it's coming all the way across, all the way out, down to Taft Highway, out in my ward. It spreads very equally. If you go out there, you can see it, and all the same ethnic groups are there, very reflective of what Bakersfield is today. So we have, you know, we have the Sikh community, the Asian community, we have the black, we have the very, very heavily Latino in all the new homes, and it's great. These people, it's our community. It reflects who we are, and it's equally spread across the whole southern part of our city between four different wards, and it's a wonderful thing. And to pick out one ward and to say, "You are eliminated from that growth forever," I think is a disservice to that ward, certainly, but to the people of Bakersfield. Now, maybe that was just an oversight by whoever was drawing the map. I would hope in future iterations of these other community maps this week, because we'll be looking at more iterations here, I hope that gets corrected because no one should ever do that to a ward, I don't care which ward it is, but to disenfranchise them that badly forever is just something a community shouldn't do. So it affects, it doesn't affect my ward as much, but Ward 6 growth is gone forever. And I just think that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And really quickly, thank you to everybody who's here in the room and continues to come back, get engaged in this process, submit new maps, work with staff and council to make those edits. It is tireless work, and I so appreciate every single one of you who have taken the time to do that and all those who came to speak out here. We appreciate you. But with great respect, Councilmember Freeman, and I forget which piece of legal text, and it's my hope that we can get some help, but I believe that either the Fair Maps Act or the Voting Rights Act specifically prevent us from taking into consideration future growth. I can't remember, Christian...
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I believe I hear a question there. Our mapping consultants can speak to that question.
Please.
And again, to introduce Sofia Garcia from Redistricting Partners, who's been tirelessly working to get all these maps prepared. working to get all these maps prepared for us. Sofia.
My name is Sofia Garcia. I'm the GIS and Outreach Director with Redistricting Partners, the consultant that is working behind the scenes with you and staff. We've had countless conversations. We've been listening to all of the meetings and making those amendments. And I wanted to address and just clarify two of the things that Councilmember Freeman spoke about. One is the issue of the river. And so we did, and we spoke with Christian and Brianna extensively on your amendments for the last meeting of having three VRA districts, looking to keep downtown whole, looking to keep the MLK area whole, and then also to address the issue of the north and the south of the river. With the construction of having three VRA districts, we were unable to accommodate the rest of those asks and amendments. So with having those three VRA districts and having them be so tight with two at that, a little bit over that 50%, and another district that is over that percentage, and we do have data tables that came with the Atlas packets that this staff has received, so those should be online. You'll have a more extensive data table. We'll be able to look at each of those wards specifically. So having that as a stone, we were unable to respect that boundary of the river. When we spoke with Christian, I brought that up. I said this may not be possible. So we looked at Allen Road being a boundary and also looking at the West Side Parkway being a boundary, so that we couldn't respect the river, but we looked to try to keep either those major roads or those freeways when we were looking at that. So I really wanted to address that because we, I want to let you know that we heard you and we did our best, but with the three VRA, we were unable to have that boundary accommodated.
Okay, well, thank you. That's a good clarification.
And then I also wanted to address your ask about future growth. And Councilmember Arias, you are correct. It's not because of, so it's because we have to use the 2020 Census Decennial Census File, so the file that we all filled out, hopefully on April 1 of 2020. I know a lot of folks in this room on either side were a part of that. Bakersfield and Kern County had a really wonderful census outreach plan. But so when we do redistricting, we have to use the data that comes from that file. So we're bound by law to use whoever filled out that census data, so the total count of people. We are unable in any redistricting to account for future growth. So whether there is a house that we see on the other side of the street that is going to be there in two years and nine years, we're unable to utilize that as a part of our redistricting process until the next decennial census.
Okay. One question.
Yes.
So are the maps that were presented tonight, do all, I think we have five of them, do all of them meet your criteria?
So we, and I spoke with staff as well, so we do have, I believe, staff talked about those traditional redistricting criteria in the existing wards and in your draft plan 2B. We did bring up the concern of having that portion of Ward Three about that it's potentially not functionally contiguous, and so we could have staff talk about that more or have your council come on and address that. So that, other than that, they do all follow those criteria, as was mentioned, so that it's a, and I don't know if we have that up and available, but when we're looking at the construction of plans, we have to follow the Fair Maps Act, those best criteria, and they're in a ranked criteria order. So you have the first criteria of looking at creating wards, and I'm sorry, I'm going between wards and districts. I know that we're in wards. I live just outside of the city, so I'm not in a ward. But you have to look at the first criteria of creating districts of relatively equal size. So that is the criteria that a lot of people are talking about, those numbers. So that's looking at that total plan deviation. So it's a criteria, and so compactness and contiguity are a little bit below the equal population and following communities of interest.
I'm sorry. With your mask and my bad hearing, it's, I have trouble, I really do have trouble following everything. But my question that, I think you said there may be a tweak here and there on the five maps to make them all legal, is that what you said?
Yes.
And so I guess it's mine, then I guess mine goes back to simply an observation that only one map allows these districts to grow fairly, and my, fairly, I'd say, economically and in sort of equal numbers and percentages. And so I guess, I guess my comment is simply an observation then.
Right, yes. And that is something that we hear throughout the board in a lot of jurisdictions, but unfortunately for the redistricting process, we are bound to use the data that we have and cannot look at future growth. Yeah, we can, you guys can talk about that in 2030 or 2031.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Arias, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I could keep you out there and ask you a couple more questions. So if I heard you correctly, the way that public submission 2B, the map, the way that you see it with the Ward Three extending up into northwest Bakersfield, you would see that there are, could potentially be some challenges to that and being consistent with the Fair Maps Act. Is that correct?
So I can have Christian speak to this too, because Paul, our principal consultant, has had email correspondence with him about that specific area. And so from our consultant perspective, we have raised that, but if Christian wants to, we can adjust that.
So before we have staff chime in, there has been correspondence between Redistricting Partners and city staff?
Yes.
That there are some questions about that. Is that correct?
Yes, about the functional contiguity of that. And so I know we're throwing around some wards that only come up once a decade, and we understand this process is confusing on multiple levels. So when we talk about contiguity, it means that you are geographically having wards that geographically touch one another. They can't hop or jump over an area. They all have to be touching one another geographically. We have contiguity in appearance and functionally. So does it look like a ward that is together, or functionally, does it make sense to move between a district or another district? We also have to look at the compactness, and compactness is, again, another term that comes up once a decade. That can mean something different when we're out of a redistricting cycle or when we're in it. And for compactness, in California, we have a rather elegant definition now under the Fair Maps Act, which is to not bypass nearby population for faraway population. And so we do, we did have some concerns specifically under those two areas for the Fair Maps Act for that ward. But again, I think that would have to be ultimately rely on your council to give you specific direction. But as your consultant and people who look at these laws and talk with jurisdictions across the California, we did raise it as a possible thing for concern, and so that's why you have other iterations of the plans that don't look at that. And again, just as a reminder, the plan that has this construction is your draft plan A, which takes your, the base of that is your existing lines. And for the other plans that you have, we used other communities of interest and other criteria for those plans.
And then pivoting, there's been a lot of discussion from community members and folks who've spoken tonight and submitted maps about this idea of creating voting rights districts. And it seems to me like there's a bit of interpretation that's necessary in order to understand clearly how it applies to the city of Bakersfield with its current C-VAP and its current population. So I'm curious to know, kind of, how do you, how does Redistricting Partners interpret that? Because I would like to know where we are. Is it at two? Is it at three? Is it at four? We would like to get some clarity on that, certainly.
So we, as your consultant, are not at liberty to tell you that you have to choose a specific number of VRA districts. That would be, your counsel would have to, your legal counsel would have to come in and address that. We're simply here to give you the option. So it is ultimately up to you, the council, to make that policy decision. We're at the point right now in the draft map hearing and the redistricting process where we are listening to the community, but we are at the point where our amendments to plans will have to come from you, the council, and to give us direction to modify the plan. Another piece of the redistricting process, and I know I'm throwing a lot of information out here to you, is that we are not allowed to draw districts specifically based on race unless your legal counsel directs us to do so. And also, when we see any districts or plans that have additional VRA districts, as was presented to you throughout this process, a little red flag is kind of raised for us in our company. So then we look at, okay, you have the option, you have the opportunity to do so, then we go in and our internal software and then give you another option, which we have done, for your two additional plans. So we, again, we're not at liberty to direct you to do anything. That direction would have to come from your council, but just hearing from public feedback, again, this is a policy decision that you all have to make as a council.
I appreciate that so much, and thank you for entertaining my questions.
Of course. No, yeah, I love them, so we're here. But again, we're working with staff and we've all had communications with what you're doing.
And I think the fact that, you know, through several submissions, whether that be through the Unity Map or submission or draft plan A3, I think it's been proven that it can be done, at least as closely as possible with some exceptions. And I'm curious to know Councilmember Gonzalez's take on some of the challenges with keeping Westchester intact with the rest of downtown. But I think we have an opportunity to do two things tonight. One is to really, you know, make sure that we're being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And I think that includes ensuring that we are moving forward on maps that are, you know, in alignment and compliance with the Fair Maps Act, also the Voting Rights Act, are empowering our African-American and Punjabi communities, and then also making sure that deviation is as low as possible while also keeping it consistent with communities of interest. But more importantly, I think we have an opportunity to create a map that we can take pride in. We can take pride in a map that truly represents what our community looks like, whether you're a Punjabi, you know, youth who lives, you know, just down the street from Councilmember Parlier, or, you know, a young Latino who lives on the east side like myself, or an African-American who grew up in the MLK community, or your Caucasian brother and sister who grew up in Oildale and eventually moved to the city and would like an opportunity to represent the city that you grew up in. I think all of that is important, and more than, you know, trying to find what is legally justifiable, we should do the right thing and take pride in this map. And more important than, I think, any of us on this dais, we have this map and it's going to last for 10 years. 10 years, and I don't know that very many of us will continue to serve on this council. And I take this opportunity very seriously. And so tonight, I would like to make a motion that we move forward on entertaining the Jakara Movement Map as public submission five, as well as draft plan A3. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. City Manager Clegg, would you like to offer some comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to reflect on that question and share some additional perspective that our consultants reflected, that we had discussed this quite a bit. As I stated earlier, I am confident that all maps that we have there before council tonight are legal and compliant. We looked hard at the questions of contiguity and compactness for all of the maps. And again, there's trade-offs that are considered. While if you look on a map, the Ward Three question that came up, it does look somewhat interesting on a map because there's that big gap in the middle, but that's a county pocket. And we addressed the question of contiguity specifically. That section of Ward Three includes Coffee Road that has a road and a sidewalk, and so it does meet the legal definition of a contiguous ward. Is it ideal in compactness? I think we could recognize that it is not, but given, again, that we have these county pocket areas, it's challenging to create a different level of contiguity, particularly when we're keeping the downtown community of interest intact. As I noted earlier, that's really where Ward Three can continue to show that population. And if there weren't those county pockets there, it would be far more compact, both in the northeast and in the north. But I'll turn it to our legal counsel to reflect also that we've gotten outside legal opinion on the question of contiguity and compactness.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Clegg. City Attorney.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, our office did consult with outside counsel, and they confirmed that Ward Three is, does meet the criteria of being compact and being geographically, geographically compact and contiguous. So it meets both criteria.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's a lot of passion in this room tonight, and I can understand that. I can appreciate that. Everybody's trying to look and get the best decision they can make. And I guarantee you, everybody that's sitting on the dais up here wants that same thing. We've gone through the hearings now. We've been through this. We've got five different maps before us right now. And now it's up for us to decide which ones we want to move forward. And I know that not all of you are going to be happy when we move a map forward because it's not going to meet your criteria. That's unfortunate, but I think we found through this process that it is unlikely that we could meet all those criteria and still have a map that's intact. I've been in Ward Three since I've been on the council. It's not really changed a whole lot since I've been on the council. It grew a little bit, I think, but it's not really changed. And this is my 15th year on the council. So we need to move forward with it. We need to make some, at least, initial decision about what we are going to do with the map for the next 10 years. I believe Ward 2B, our map 2B, is the best. And there are a number of reasons for that, but I'm just telling you, I think it's the In saying that, I want to make a motion to send map 2B and only map 2B with the revision to move the area bounded by Ash Road, Stockdale Highway, Newstein Road, and Ming Avenue from Ward Five into Ward Six to the full council for a final vote on March 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be clear that that motion, you know, goes, flies in the face of an opportunity to create three VRAs that is consistent with federal legislation that has been enforced in so many other communities throughout our country. And we have an opportunity to do the right thing, and that motion does not, it's not consistent. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I want to ask staff, I thought we still had some time to make some adjustments.
Councilmember Smith, we have some time, again, to meet our March 16 timeframe. We need to have proposed maps published by March 9. So there's a very narrow window, but there's still some window.
So the maps would have to be published and then voted on after that?
Correct.
So we're not, we're not, we don't have to vote on the maps tonight. We can give direction, multiple maps, and come back and vote at a later date?
So Councilmember Smith, we need direction tonight on what specific maps to bring on the 16th, but there's, again, a very narrow window to try and create a map for the 16th that's reflective of some feedback tonight, but it needs to be fairly specific. If it's very open-ended, we're hard-pressed to craft a map that would be specific enough to be, you know, responsive by the 16th.
Right. Why is, you know, there's... Why, you know, there's two issues that I've heard that I thought could be addressed, was the Ward 3 coming down into, or District 2 is called on the Unity Map, coming down into, or, yeah, D3 coming in, that square that comes down, that maybe that could be straightened up, and, and maybe, you know, we could work a little more with the river further out. Comment was made, so, I mean, I would like to continue to work on those personally. It's kind of where I stand.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for the City Attorney. So these maps were republished last night. Is there a public viewing requirement?
The only requirement for a public viewing is when it's going to go to first reading. So we have to post them seven days prior to the first reading. So we could, we technically received maps this afternoon that were presented to you today.
But if we make a motion and adopt a motion to advance one map that's already prescribed, isn't that de facto the preferred map?
In essence, you're moving it forward, and that will be the map that goes to first reading. So yes.
Do we have any concerns about that strategy from a legal perspective?
They are, they are all legally defensible. We've all had an opportunity to, our offices had an opportunity to review them.
I'm asking about the process.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you, we are, we are moving forward by what the law allows us to do, so. Yes, we've had our four public hearings. We had an opportunity to allow the public to speak, and so this is the, this is the moment where you decide which of the maps, map or maps, moves forward to first reading.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I don't see any other requests to speak. So we've had two motions, and by the way that we proceed, we'll take the second one first. Madam Clerk, would you, I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, would you just state that, please? Oh, and Councilmember Smith has a question or a comment.
I'm sorry, could I, could I just ask Vice Mayor if he would leave an opening to adjust that map with those two ideas? I would ask him to amend that motion if he would. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but do we even have time to do that?
Vice Mayor, I, I would suggest that there is time if, again, the feedback is very specific about the recommendations to adjust one of the maps in front of us.
Maybe Councilmember Smith could just tell me about what we're doing here.
I'm sorry, I, the adjustments I was asking for was on the Unity Map, not on the map you moved, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
And that's submission number 5.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, so Councilmember Gonzalez now has a request to speak.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make a motion tonight that we advance maps 2B and Public Submission 5. 2B and Public Submission 5. With, with the adjustments to Public Submission 5.
And 2B.
And 2B.
That's the last motion.
If I may, then, the adjustments to Map 5, we would appreciate some clarity. What I heard was, looking at the area between Wards 4 and 5 along the river, perhaps if I could suggest that, what I heard you saying, Councilmember Smith, was to make some adjustments that may be a little bit consistent with what the boundaries of 2B between 4 and 5 look like, to a degree, or just work on that boundary along the river.
The two issues that, that we talked about was the boundary between 4 and 5 and the river, number one. And the second one was the one that Councilmember Gonzalez had brought up, where the square comes down into the downtown area, between 2 and 3.
Correct. And so my question is, would we, would you have the square move up? Would you have?
I would have, I would have the square move up. Would make sense to me, yes. That area seems to be more downtown. But it's Councilman Gonzalez's.
No, that's exactly what I was getting at. The square needs to move up.
Just the square.
For Ward 2, yeah.
Councilmember Gonzalez, anything further?
That's it. That's my motion.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Considering if that adjustment is made and Ward 3 moves up and Ward 2 takes up that chunk, that's more than likely going to create a need for a decrease in population potentially for Ward 2. And I think it would be appropriate to make Ward 1 consistent with Highway 58, if that is a necessity. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Madam City Attorney, we have three motions before us on the floor, and I know we have a lot of participants here tonight who are unfamiliar with our process. So would you please just go through and clearly explain how it works with the motions first, and then we'll take the motions.
Yes, yes. Chair, there you go. So the last motion goes first, which is Councilmember Gonzalez's motion to move forward with Map 2B as en boi, and submission Map Number 5 with the two adjustments, one being the boundary between Ward 4 and 5 along the river, and that the square that comes down in Ward 3 move up to Ward 2. And the adjustments in 5 are stated.
So, Madam City Attorney, just for our audience, explain if a motion fails, what happens? So let's do the first one and explain how that would work, because I know that can be very confusing.
If that last motion that I just explained fails, we move to the second motion that was made, which was Vice Mayor Weir's motion to move forward with Map 2B with no changes. Did he have changes on that? Oh, I'm sorry, he did have adjusted changes. And the adjusted changes included specific streets. Do you have them?
Ash.
Ash, Stockdale Highway, Ming Avenue, and Newstein Road.
Okay.
If that motion fails, then we move to the very first motion that was made by Councilmember Arias, and that was for Map, Submission Number 5, and for Submission Map A3.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Now would you announce the motion that we're going to vote on now? Please.
So the motion is for, to move forward with Map 2B as en boi and subdivision Map 5, sorry, Submission Number 5. The adjustments by the boundaries between 4, Ward 4 and 5, including the river, and moving the square that comes down in Ward 3 to Ward 2.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Colleagues, you have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Oh, yes, and include the adjustments on 5, I'm sorry.
Is anybody having trouble voting?
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir, Councilmember Freeman, and Councilmember Gray voting no.
Thank you. Do you have further comment?
So the other motions just die.
Correct. Thank you. And that concludes this portion. Let's take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back for our next item. Thank you all for your patience. Right, we're gathered back together at 7:17. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the next item?
Public Statements.
Thank you. And would you call the first public speaker, please? And as just a reminder, we have two sections of public statements.
Regarding Item 8D, we have two public speakers. The first speaker, Daisy Vega.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, my name is Daisy Vega, and I'm a member of Greenfield Walking Group, and I wanted to talk about my experience going to the park. We need more security, or at least, let's say, more police in the parks, because that day when I went to the park, someone was chasing after me, so I had to go to a random house to sit down and wait for that person to leave, but after that, thanks to God, nothing happened to me, but I guess we needed more securities in the park, and that's pretty much all.
Now, are you all together on this one two minute? Hema? Go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Hema Perez. Soy de Greenfield Walking Group.
Good afternoon, my name's Hema Perez. I'm from the Greenfield Walking Group. Y estoy aquí para hablar acerca de la presencia de los rangers en los parques. I'm here to speak on the matter of park rangers. Ustedes saben, nosotros tenemos más de 15 años nuestra organización, que comenzamos precisamente en un parque. As you know, we have, our organization has been around about 15 years when we started at the Park Steerin' Park.
Y siempre que cuento nuestra historia, siempre cuento que doy gracias a la policía, al departamento de la policía.
And every time I say the story, I always say, "Thank you," or "I'm always grateful" to the police department.
Porque eso fue clave para que nosotros pudiéramos sentirnos seguros y comenzar un grupo de caminata.
Because they were key on us feeling safe at the park and be able to start our walking group.
Cada día iba un policía y se quedaba por media hora mientras que caminábamos.
Every day there would be a police officer there and would stay there at the park for 30 minutes so we can conduct our walk.
Y de ahí identificábamos otros problemas que también eran importantes.
During our walk, we began to identify other things that were important at the park.
Como banquetas, luces.
Such as sidewalks, lightning.
Graffiti, limpiezas.
Graffiti, cleaning.
Y durante estos 15 años hemos estado, seguimos en los parques.
And throughout this 15 years, we're still involved at the parks.
Y hemos vivido muchas experiencias.
And we have many experiences.
Una fue que trataron de secuestrar a mi hija cuando tenía 12 años.
One experience was that somebody tried to kidnap my daughter when she was 12 years old.
Esto fue algo personal a mí, pero de ahí hemos, el año pasado experimentamos que después de que terminó la zumba.
Last year, another instance, after the zumba class was done.
Una de las mujeres se quedó sola a caminar.
One of the ladies stayed at the park alone, walking.
Y dos hombres trataron de subirla a un carro.
And two men tried to take her into their car.
Hace como dos meses también un hombre se aproximó a nosotros con una navaja.
Another instance, about two months ago, a man approached us with the knife.
Viendo muy amenazante.
He was very threatening.
Y llamamos a la policía.
And we called BPD.
Estos son solamente como ejemplos.
Ms. Perez, can you wrap up your comments? I, I have more time because of translation.
My time?
Yes. Just close your comments, please.
Okay. Yo espero que la presencia de los rangers.
I hope that park rangers presence.
Sea una oportunidad para crear esa confianza entre ellos y la comunidad.
It's an opportunity to create trust between BPD and community.
Y también para trabajar juntos.
And to work together.
En identificar problemas, no solo en los parques, sino también en nuestra comunidad.
And identifying other issues, not only in our parks, but in our community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez.
Gracias.
Thank you, and this is all the Greenfield Walking Group. Madam Clerk, the next speaker, please. And thank you, Greenfield Walking Group. You have been so consistent in helping our community. Really appreciate that.
Mayor, the next 11 speakers are speaking regarding Item 13A. The first speaker, Curtis Bingham.
Lieutenant General, Mayor, and the board, my name is Curtis James Bingham, senior servant of our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten Son of a holy heavenly Father, God Almighty. Thank you for, and God retrusts. I'd just like to say, one of the most beautiful things you can do for people is what you're finna do with the rangers in the park. That's one of the greatest things I would see come out of here. The park is a very special place where families could go. I am a park person, and a park is a good place where you can go and relax yourself. And so it's one of the most beautiful things I hope to see come to pass, because the Lord told us, this world will end because of evil. The Lord says it's gonna get worse and worse, and it is. That was written before any of us was born. One thing we have to take notice, whenever a government make the people think they ain't with the law, you can hang it up. When they was talking about defund law enforcement, you guys didn't. You guys were blessed and you escaped. But whenever you talk that, you done unleashed Satan. I'm talking about the real devil. You done unleashed him. Whenever the gov, the people think the government ain't with the law, you can forget it, and we almost had to. And you heard the President last night talking about giving them their money. You hear everybody talking about giving them money. You can't do that to the law. If you want to get a person out of there and the law ain't right, get them out. But defund them? I've said before, other meetings, that's the most disrespecting thing that you could do to law enforcement, considering, look how many of them getting killed now. All of us need to be shaken. Once they start killing them, what we gonna do? And they dropping like flies out there. And this is the truth. People don't like the truth. Our Lord and Savior died because of the truth, but this is what you're hearing. Now, you're hearing the truth. We got some bad times out there, have a thousand meetings here, but if you can't keep them safe, you ain't gonna get it. We do have a prince, and Chief Terry. One of his officers slammed down a cellphone just a couple of days ago. The other officer reported him. And that's the chief trying to take care of some business, but you don't hear the public bragging about that. Satan, so I just wanted to say, thank you. Let's take our law enforcement, the extra 20 million we got, please give them something they need, all they can get, because it's crime, crime, crime out there. Thank you, Mr. Bingham.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Carol Lair.
And can you just announce the following one, please?
Lily Parker.
Ms. Parker, you can just wait there, but just be prepared. Oh, sure, come on up there. Welcome, Ms. Lair. Ms. Lair, would you lower the microphone, please? Lower the microphone, please.
Lower the microphone.
Thank you.
Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity, for letting me address you tonight. I feel very strongly that if the new city park rangers are approved, that it would be critically important to engage the public in helping to protect our parks. The public must be encouraged to get involved in identifying problem areas and illegal activity. The more eyes and ears that we have watching and listening, the better the enforcement will be. I respectfully propose two suggestions. First, there needs to be a very vigorous see-something, say-something campaign on TV, on the radio, social media, in both English and Spanish. The word needs to get out that you want the public to be a partner in protecting the parks, and that they can make a difference in the quality of life in our community. Second, signs need to be posted in the parks, letting the public know who to call to report these problems. It is absolutely key for the public to know how to report the problems that they see at our parks. In conclusion. In conclusion, I believe it's critically important for the public and the rangers to work together for this program to achieve the goal of reducing vandalism and making the parks more safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lair. Next speaker, please, and announce the following one, please.
Lily Parker, followed by Ed Gade.
Madam City Clerk, just reset the timer, please. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and good evening, council members. I am Lily Parker. I am the Executive Director of Bakersfield Senior Center. We're located less than a half block from Lowell Park. Every morning, I drive to my place of employment. My view, as I turn onto Fourth Street from P, is seeing the homeless camped out in the park, tents, bikes, trash baskets, and what looks like a white front door leaning against all of that stuff, as if someone's going to knock on the door. Not to mention the number of people sleeping in that same area, around the covered sitting area, sleeping on the slide or the climbing apparatus where the children should be playing. I'm asking you, our council members, to endorse, fund, and approve the mid-year budget adjustments and appropriation for the park ranger program proposed by the Recreation and Park Director, Rick Anthony, whose focus will be to enforce safety in our parks. And I know I'm not going to get through this, I've got a lot, but I do have a question that I want to ask. Councilman Ken Ware, Ward Three. Your focus has been on finances and accounting. I'm asking for your help to approve the mid-year budget adjustments and appropriation for the park ranger program. Can you focus? Can your focus include the safety of community and not just accounting? Councilman Smith, Ward Four. You stated in your bio, you're focused on staying attentive to the specific needs of Ward Four residents while also maintaining a greater vision for the community as a whole. You also stated...
Ms. Parker, your time is up. Go ahead and conclude.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Ed Gade. Following Ed, it's Gabby Gonzalez.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Go and city council members. I'm here tonight representing the Kern County World War II Veterans Memorial, which is going to be built at Jastro Park. This is a half-million-dollar memorial that we are going to then gift to the city of Bakersfield. Our biggest fear is to see what happened at the cancer survivor memorial at Beach Park. It no longer exists due to theft and vandalism. We are all in deep support of this Kern County, or this park ranger program. And we want to inspire each of you to consider approving this long overdue program like some of our sister cities, Fresno, Santa Maria, Ventura, Modesto, Sacramento, and Anaheim, who they are implementing that program, if they haven't already, into their cities. We are the tenth largest city in the state of California. We need to get our act together and get our parks where they are safe. And I believe the park ranger positions will be able to prevent theft, vandalism, and unsafe conditions at our parks. This is a must-have program for our hard-working, tax-paying citizens so they may again visit our beautiful, well-kept parks. I beseech each of you to approve this long overdue program so we can get our parks back. Now is the time and the opportunity to do the right thing and provide this important program to all of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to our veterans. And we are growing so quickly. We are now the ninth largest city, on our way to eighth.
Well, good, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Hi. Hold on, what a meeting. Oh, man. Hello. Okay, five seconds. Hello, my name is Gabriela Gonzalez. I am the External Affairs Advisor for California Resources Corporation. California Resources Corporation is an independent oil and natural gas company committed to energy transition in the sector. As one of the largest employers in Bakersfield, CRC is proud and excited to be one of the first to raise our hand and say yes to Blue Zones. But for us, it's much more than being first. It's about what this project will do for our community, its infrastructure, our employees and their families. CRC is committed to investing one million dollars over the next five years to ensure that we help our employees and their families live longer, be healthier physically and mentally. CRC is proud to invest in this program that will provide resources and will prioritize Blue Zones within our city. This will be instrumental in its success. We love that Blue Zones covers everything that Bakersfield is focused on as a community, financial, economic, well-being, built environment, safety, infrastructure, community, and physical well-being. CRC is dedicated to make a lasting positive impact in our community, and we want to see our employees flourish during the workday and after hours. This is why we support the Blue Zones project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. The next speaker, please.
Cheryl Scott, followed by William Cooper.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Go, city council members. I'm Cheryl Scott. I'm a resident of Ward Four. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this project tonight, the proposed park ranger program. Like many people in Bakersfield, I spend hours every week at our local parks, whether it's for an early morning run or an evening or weekend game of pickleball, or three, or five, or seven games of pickleball. If you play pickleball, you know what I mean. It makes my heart so happy to look around and see people in the park, using the park for good, for exercise, for family gatherings, students practicing their dance steps on the stage at Jastro Park in the evening. Parks are our outdoor gathering places, and they build a sense of community. Over Memorial Day weekend, my Rotary Club, Breakfast Rotary, presents Thousand Flags at the park at Riverwalk. And if you've ever attended that event, you know what I mean when I say parks are a beautiful gathering place that builds community. But the truth is, neighborhood parks can also be a place where bad things happen. Feeling safe, being safe, is my number-one concern. Many of us have an "I remember when" story. And when the first speaker came up a few moments ago from the Greenfield Walking Group, her story could have been my story. During an early morning run several years ago, my girlfriends and I were nearly hit by a car at Windsor Park in Seven Oaks. The car drove onto the park and chased us on the icy grass, cold morning in December. And then my friends were chased by those same men who parked, chased them on foot, while I ran to a doorstep and crouched and hid and watched all of it unfold. Fortunately, we all escaped safely, even though I had been screaming and my friends thought it was because I had been hit. I'm realistic to know this won't solve the problem, every problem we have in the parks. But having an official presence will help keep them safe and will help deter vandalism at the same time. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Next speaker, please.
William Cooper, followed by Amy Smith.
Welcome.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Cooper, representing the Kern River Parkway Foundation. I'm not going to read all of this because I'll just endorse everything that's been said by the previous three or four speakers. We support this park ranger program. We've been at this a long time, and we agree with Director Anthony's assessment that conditions in our parks, and especially in the Kern River Parkway corridor, are about as bad as I've ever seen them. And so to hear these stories by these people who visit our parks, I mean, parks, public spaces, are vital services. There's no way to get around that. And I think measure N money is well-spent providing public safety in those areas. So we endorse the program.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next speaker, please.
Amy Smith.
I'm here.
Following that, Michael Turnipseed.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Go and city council people. I'm Amy Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the Bakersfield Museum of Art and proud resident of Bakersfield for more than twenty-five years. I'm here today to voice mine and my organization's support for the proposed city of Bakersfield's park ranger program. As a parent of now-adult children, I've spent many years at local parks throughout Bakersfield for playdates, sporting events, and dance performances. Some of my children's happiest moments have included an activity at one of Bakersfield's parks. Bakersfield Museum of Art, as you know, is located adjacent to Mill Creek Park, across the parking lot from the Community House, previously an older adult recreation organization. When Community House closed and the building reverted to the city, our Board of Directors and staff were pleased to hear that the building would be utilized by city departments. Moreover, we were ecstatic to hear that it would be primarily housed in Parks and Recreation Department staff. In the almost six years I've worked for the museum of art, our building and surrounding gardens have encountered vandalism, graffiti, theft, destruction of property, and other crimes. We are very fortunate to have a strong, positive relationship with our fire, police, and other city departments. Additionally, we have worked closely with the Parks and Recreation Department, initially Diane Hoover, and now Rick Anthony, to ensure good communications and awareness of activities affecting BMOA and our surrounding areas. Museum staff have regularly witnessed drug deals in the park, violent fights, open fires, homeless encampments. We've removed bathers from our fountains, that's always fun, cleaned up graffiti, and dealt with the theft of catalytic converters from their vehicles. Museum visitors, many of whom are children who are attending our workshops and camps, sometimes have to pass piles of trash left from what we call the weekend partiers in the parking lot, and upon occasion discarded needles, condoms, and other things. I'm grateful that the city's response for cleanup and assistance is always timely, but the addition of park rangers enforcing park rules, deterring vandalism, and preventing the formation of illegal park encampments would be an absolute blessing.
Ms. Smith, your time is up.
Okay. I would really hope that you would consider Mr. Anthony's request to establish the park program. So thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Michael Turnipseed. Following Mr. Turnipseed, it's Andrew Yasania.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. One quick comment, even though it was on tonight that I wasn't going to speak about, was redistricting. Ten years ago, I watched the county go through the same process, and I watched them have their favorite little model that didn't really comply, but it, I guess it's got its little finger into it. And so they got sued. It cost taxpayers twelve million dollars. So if you get sued, it's going to cost you probably more. Is it worth it? Taxpayers, I know, are going to say, "No, it isn't." That's the question. Are you willing to pay twelve or fifteen million dollars to protect little squiggly lines on a piece of paper? That's your challenge. Oh, and if it is twelve million dollars, that's about seven thousand dollars per city employee that you could give them in bonuses for extra money and make it a better place to work. Maybe you could spend the money better that way. Getting the park ranger issue, park rangers cover two critical issues, public safety and quality of life, as you've heard. And it's a great tool to help build relationships when you have rangers there walking the parks with the people. And we've talked a lot about walking the Greenfield Walking Group. Building relationships with them on their turf is a positive thing for the city to happen. And I've also heard that, well, this is mid-year. In April of nineteen, the week you just started collecting measure N money, you spent a whole lot of money on equipment and stuff for the cleanup of the parks and everything. And you weren't going to hire any people until July or August. It takes six to eight months to get this program off the ground, and you wish you could start it tomorrow. So you need to be thinking down the road that if you start it in July, it's going to be next January or February. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Next speaker, please.
Andrew Yasania. Following Andrew, it's Stephen Montgomery.
Good evening, city council, mayor. My name's Andrew Yasania. I work for the city of Bakersfield Parks Division. I'm here in behalf and favor of the ranger program. I basically came here today to tell you guys what I see firsthand. I'm actually an individual that mows the parks. I got Wayside, Saunders, just pretty much a lot of bad parks. And one thing that we encounter a lot is encampments at the park. Basically, the homeless gets in our way of trying to do our job. We also encounter a lot where they threaten us with weapons, telling us if we don't leave their park, they're going to, you know, do stuff to us. There's nonstop graffiti, you know. I got fellow coworkers that take pride in their job every day, showing that they want to keep it clean and nice. So, you know, their families, friends and families can come, but the next day we come, it's back to square one. It's just an ongoing issue. And me personally, I think bringing on the ranger program will help bring back, you know, friends and family back to the park, getting them encouraged to come and feel safe. And at the same time, it could help us get away from all the homeless with the threats, the graffiti, the litter, the vandalism. There was also a time where I got called by family and friends saying at Wayside Park, there was, our restrooms were on fire. And that's happened twice already since I've been in this area, which has only been six months. And that's pretty much it. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Yasania. Next speaker, please.
Stephen Montgomery.
Mayor Go, members of the council. Good evening. My name is Steve Montgomery. I'm the Chair of the Kern Quea Chapter, CR Club. Those previous speakers are going to be kind of hard to beat. But the CR Club enthusiastically supports implementing a city park ranger program. We see this as key to preventing the continued and ongoing degradation and abuse by those who among us irresponsible behavior results in much damage to taxpayer-supported assets. Land like the San Miguel Grove Preserve that is open for public to enjoy has become by default unavailable to the public. These places are repeatedly trashed for illegal camping, recreational drug consumption, dumping, and wanton vandalism that results in much trash, filth, and physical damage, making the places like these undesirable while costing the taxpayers a whole lot of money. Adopting a ranger program puts boots on the ground and giving the responsible public not only security and protection out to our treasured open spaces, but a source of information to the public as they seek to enjoy our public parks. Citizens like Bill Cooper, Rich O'Neal, Andy Honig, and I might also point out staff, and other numerous others who deserve mention, have lobbied for and have devoted much time and sweat in the field to save these areas for us and for future generations. It's tragically irresponsible to tolerate those who would give much insult to their work, trash these areas, and destroy what we seek to prevent while threatening to the security of those who would seek to make legitimate use of these places.
Mr. Montgomery, your time is up. Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay. Well, anyway, we urge the council to support the director's recommendation to implement a park ranger program with urgency of the problem sooner than later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Madam Clerk, are there any other items related to the agenda?
Mayor Go, that was our final public speaker for items related to the agenda.
Thank you. And now would you call those for the non-agenda items, please?
The first public speaker for non-agenda items is Isaiah... The first public speaker for non-agenda items is Isaiah Crompton.
Followed by?
Followed by O.C. Crawford.
Thank you. Can you raise the mic, please?
Thank you for giving us the time this evening.
Mr. Crawford, would you raise the mic and just get a little closer, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for giving us this opportunity. This is my niece, Christina Crompton, and we also have Pastor Jehoshaphat Jordan with us this evening. And she's going to read what we have.
Stephen, thank you. Dear Council, thank you for your assistance in supporting our inquiries and the community garden on MLK Boulevard in Virginia. Since our development and awakening services has been committed to reducing substance abuse and food and security and homeless and providing us opportunities for providing opportunities of engagements, activities, and improving the qualities of life for the southeast community, Family Fun Fishing Day, annual Martha's King barbecue, et cetera. Last year, we distribute over 9,000 pounds of food, and comeback of security and 200 people attended the Family Fun Fishing Day. These were one-time appointments in the time activities, events. At the Awakening Services would also like to take the opportunity to request 4,500 for funding and building a community capacity through a place-based approach to include education and community engagements, programs, services, and projects. Will target engagement and engaging first through 12th grade youth and adults in Lakeview Area, Martha's King Boulevard, after boundaries of East Bakersfield to South King, and also Washington, Southeast Bakersfield, South King, et cetera. The Martha's King Boulevard Community Garden capacity building projects, projects consistent in delivering the education programs for youth first through 12th grade and adults regarding social disparities in health environments and urban gardening, nutrition, STEM programs, activities, and exposure of college and opportunity careers.
Ms. Crompton, your time is up. Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crompton. Thank you, Mr. Crompton. Next speaker, please.
O.C. Crawford. Following O.C., it's Florence Douglas.
I'm so sorry.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Mr. Crawford, just one minute.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Crawford. Can I ask staff to please follow up with that request? I wasn't quite sure about the funding amount specifically.
Forty-five hundred.
Was it forty?
Forty-five hundred.
Was it 4,500 or 40?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred, okay. $4,500, okay. But in any event, if staff can follow up with that request and see what opportunities might exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is O.C. Crawford. I'm with the True Love Tribe, and I'm going off script tonight. It's been a heck of a meeting thus far. I would like to say this to begin with. The one thing about the Park Rangers is I would suggest or recommend that the people who are employed to do that, that they come from the community of the parks they serve. I think that would be beneficial. Earlier this evening, it was mentioned that we just follow the authority no matter what. And I think I am a supporter of those in public office, as I think you all know. I've held banquets honoring public officials because I do respect and honor them. But the thing is, if our founding fathers, if they had been compliant to King George, we wouldn't be here today. But they stood up for what's right for human, for human beings. We have unalienable rights that no one can take away, a king, a queen, or anybody else. And like I said, I support public officials, but as long as they follow the Constitution. When they get away from the Constitution, I have a problem with that. And I'm a peaceful man, been one all of my life, and I will continue. But I will not tolerate not following the Constitution. Doesn't matter if it's council member, mayor, president, whoever, whomever. We must follow the Constitution. If we don't follow written laws, then we just go with the whims of what we think. That's what dictators do. They do what they want to do. It doesn't matter what anybody says or thinks. And if you go against them, they will lock you up or kill you, freeze your bank account, as they did with the truckers in Ontario, in Canada, without arrest, without anything. So anyway, I'm just saying, follow the Constitution, which is like a lot of the scripture, holy words, is in here. God gave us freedom, comes from God. So we must honor that. And when anybody doesn't, then we must stand up and stop it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next speaker, please.
Florence Douglas. Following Florence, it's William Cooper.
Doesn't look like she's here. Go ahead and call the next speaker, please.
William Cooper. Following Mr. Cooper, it's Michael Turnipseed.
I'm William Cooper. I'm representing Bring Back the Kern. It's a subgroup of the Kern River Parkway Foundation made up of younger people, a lot younger. And their main focus is the health of the river, restoring water to the river and cleaning it up. So I'm here, I got roped into this. Young people are really busy, and so I was the old retired guy. So March 12 is our next cleanup at 2436 Oak Street. We're at Dead Ends over there off 24th. You're all invited. A couple of you showed up. Last, the end of January, they had a group cleanup, Bring Back the Kern, the younger people. We had 75 volunteers out there with an average of three to four hours per person. That's a lot of man-hours to put in there. We also had city code enforcement and Public Works, I think, was there picking up after us, hauling stuff out of there. A lot of investment and man-hours was made there with the goal of reclaiming that river and keeping it, not allowing the same problems to develop after we go in there and clean it up. We've had like six cleanups in that beach park area. And so the goal is not to allow it to return to what it was, has been. The camps are being removed slowly. Trash is being picked up. So you're all invited. March 12, 9 o'clock. So we'll be taking names. So please come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. And Mr. Turnipseed now.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Just want to bring up a couple things. First of all, Measure N. As we're in the budget season, I hope your council would sit down and looking at a more efficient and effective way of spending those funds. It's not, it's one of 13 goals. Well, everything the city does is one of Measure N's 13 goals, but you don't sit down and prioritize what the true needs are. You have been spending money in a shotgun way, and we need to start being bullets, hitting the problem areas intensively and effectively to start driving the change that we need in improving the quality of life of this town. And with the city charter, I saw you talked about that this afternoon. The charter needs to be looked at as the encompassing framework for moving forward in the city. We have a chance to look at it and build a structure and develop strategic plans to actually address each of our problems. And I've been walking around for five years watching the city, and I haven't seen a strategic plan yet. I don't know when's the last time they did one, if they've ever had one. But they do it in business. You don't start your five-year plan or 10-year plan, you know, Bruce did. You have to have a plan. And I think the city, it's not annual council goals, it's strategic planning with vision that needs to take place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. And now would you call the next item, please?
Appointment of one regular member, Ward 1, to complete a term to expire December 2022, and one alternate committee member, Ward 5, to complete a term to expire December 2024 to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to resignations. We've provided staff memorandum this evening, making corrections to the staff report, clarifying that the appointee for regular member Ward 1 will complete the unexpired term of Anastasia Lester, set to expire December 2022, and that the appointee for alternate member Ward 5 will complete the unexpired term of Crystal Pentong, which will expire December 2024. Applications for appointment have been received from Edward Robinson and Jennely Furman.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. No comments.
Thank you. And so Councilmember Arias, would you like to make a nomination?
Thank you, Mayor. It gives me great pleasure tonight to actually recognize Jennely Furman, who's actually in the back of the room tonight. She's an aspiring Latina leader here in our community. When she's not taking care of her beautiful daughter, Gianna, she spends her time serving in many capacities, including on an advisory board for the Latina leaders of Kern County, is also involved in HOPE, which is an incredible organization, and is also deeply involved in helping out our friendship house on formerly Cottonwood Road. So with that, I proudly nominate Jennely Furman for KBB.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. And Councilmember Freeman, do you wish to make a nomination?
I only found out about this a little, about two weeks ago, and I'm still, I'm still thinking about a new appointee. So, no, I'm not ready to.
All right, we'll revisit that. And so Vice Mayor, would you like to, or since we only have one, Councilmember Arias, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. I am happy to move that we accept the nomination of Jennely Furman for KBB, representing Ward 1.
Thank you for motion. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Ms. Furman, thank you so much for your service. I saw you last night at the Honor Music Festival and told you how difficult this committee is, like a lot of work is expected. And you were so enthusiastic in wanting to serve. So thank you for your service. And now, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8V for approval.
Vice Mayor?
I have one item to be separately voted on. Are there any others? Seeing none, make a motion to approve staff's recommendation for item 8A through 8V, with the exception of 8R.
You have a motion. Please cast your votes. Thank you. And now we'll have R., which is from Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. This has to do with police motorcycles. When the city manager came on, we had zero police motors that were in operation, and our pedestrian deaths and traffic incidents were off the map. And I think we're whittling at that, making a safer community a little bit at a time. And the motor unit helps do that. Myself and my colleagues have worked hard to bring that program back. I want to thank the city management for doing that, and the police department, too. I move this item. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a motion. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearings 9A and 9B for approval.
Thank you. Now with the consent calendar hearings, the purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. So at this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 9A through B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the matter from the consent calendar hearings. Seeing none, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearings? Seeing none, at this time, consent calendar public hearings items 9A through B is now closed. Vice Mayor?
Move staff's recommendation.
You have a motion. Please cast your votes. Thank you. And now the next item, please.
New business item, 13A, fiscal year 2021-22 mid-year budget recommendations.
Thank you. City Manager, Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a presentation this evening to outline our mid-year budget. As that's coming up, I would just reflect that it's been a two-year pandemic, and I'm not sure what I would call normal. But typically at mid-year, historically, it's been a narrower scope of recommendations. And while this is actually more narrow than we could consider, it is a notable funding amount, but take into consideration that we have significant funds because of ARPA. We have also significant funds because our revenue projections have been above what was anticipated. So we'll walk through this. But I would reflect that we've covered most of this information recently, and given the hour, I'll try to move quickly. So on our budget overview, just wanted to provide confirmation to the council that on property tax, development fee, revenues, we're about on target. But other areas, we're seeing significant increases. We're seeing significant increases in our transient occupancy tax. Largely, that funds visit Bakersfield as well as a number of capital projects. On the sales tax side, this number is actually new. This is something that we were just revised based on feedback from our sales tax consultants in this last week. The last numbers that you saw were $7 million and $19 million. And today, we're estimating that we're going to receive $14 million and $21 million more in Bradley Burns and PSVS respectively. Within the current fiscal year, those will be collections beyond our anticipated revenues. I think overall, that's good news. But we also, again, note high levels of inflation, and there's uncertainty in the markets and in the world. And so it's still a time to be conservative about some of, especially those ongoing funds. Largely, what we're here to consider tonight are our year-end fund balances. And so there is significant funds available. Part of that, again, was due to revenues coming in higher than expected in last fiscal year that ended June. And also because we experienced some reimbursements through CARES and ARPA, it's generated some one-time monies. And so we're looking at $29 million on the general fund side and $20 million on the PSVS side. And then also the $94 million for ARPA. We have already done a direct expenditure reimbursement of $7 million, meaning the costs of city staff providing direct responses to the pandemic. We've already reimbursed $7 million of that against the $94 million from ARPA. But the remainder of those funds, we developed a framework, but we've yet to deploy specific initiatives in response to those. And as we've been working on those with staff, we are ready for a portion of our initiatives to move forward and appropriate to move forward and appropriate those dollars to signal to staff to finalize plans in those areas. So the recommendations that we're making are that a majority of the funding go to large strategic programs. These are the one-time dollars. On the general fund side, we're looking at dollars that go to our regional public safety radio system and ERP. These are dollars that we provided to you in February at the preview. There's no difference here. Also, the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund, we'll speak to that in a moment at a high level. But it is to, again, control our own fate and prepare for the future. And I consider that putting money into reserves. Also, the facility reserve, we have not met those goals yet. We've met our cash reserves goals, but allocations from general fund and PSVS into reserves at mid-year would get us very close to that goal. And then we know that there's other expenses coming. Part of those are for market compensation adjustments, as well as just expenditures into the new fiscal year. And so we have those two set asides at the bottom of that slide. In addition to some of those large strategic areas, some smaller dollar amounts in some key areas, we're talking about enhancing our public safety cameras, drones. Our self-contained breathing apparatus are at their useful life and not compatible with those at the county and the standards that are in front of us and wanting to address that. We have an opportunity to do that with one-time funds. There's some other safety equipment and alerting system for the fire department that would speed up our turnouts and response times. We're looking at updating our emergency operations plan. It hasn't been done in some time. And again, it's a one-time opportunity to catch up on that. We see a huge influx in grant dollars that are coming down and want to have some contract dollars available to help us go after and get grants and leverage those dollars. We feel like that there's a big return on investment for those, seventy-five thousand dollars. This council is aware of our class and comp study, and we've been moving forward. We're ready to move on that item, but this would provide the funding to conduct the study. We also were unsuccessful getting a grant for traffic calming. Want to move that forward with our own dollars. It's been long in coming, and we think this is a way to move it to completion. We have a number of city facility needs. As you know, recently, the PD needed to lease space because of the growth in the police department, and this would facilitate some of those leased costs as well as moving costs. And then it allows us to move some of our staff that are crunched into other spaces into some of the space that PD has been in. And these costs would allow us to make some of those tenant improvements and get city staff into office spaces. And lastly, to do a space needs assessment to help us plan for future years. We also are seeing the TCC grant project moving forward, and this would be a set aside to help us with the project management and the application for that grant. Lastly, this seven million dollars is, we treat it as really a carry forward again into next year to allow us to be prepared for next year's budget. There's some CIP projects also recommended. These, again, are ones that we have reviewed. The police department facility, specific needs are for our property room and for our shooting range, significant needs in several areas there in protecting evidence and having the range work well for our trainings. Mason Moran has had a funding gap, wanting to close that gap. Convention Center is about doing a little extra than we had planned initially in light of the economic summit coming to town. Bicycle pedestrian feasibility study, again, with a number of grants coming down. We want to be able to get some of our bike ped projects that aren't quite ready, get them ready, grant-ready, so we don't miss out on grant opportunities. And the good news is, we don't have as many ready today because so many have been recently funded, and this gets us a bit ahead of the game. And then for the downtown, the first element there is we've had a complete streets project in design for Nineteen Street, L to N, and this would provide the construction funding for that. And then last item is, again, related to the economic summit, having some dollars to go through and put trees in tree wells, address planters with disrepair, lighting, ballers, et cetera, and some deferred maintenance that's built up a bit over time. And this would allow us to move on that a little bit quicker than otherwise. So we put some information here together that is related to the current city council goals, that you can see there, the vast majority of funding is about our fiscal solvency and putting away reserves or big projects and for our future. The next biggest portion is related to public safety, and we do also have quality of life and urban renewal as elements there, as well as some infrastructure dollars. Switching gears over to the public safety vital services tax, and this will look similar. We're splitting some of the costs for ERP, radios, the pension trust fund, and facility reserve between general fund and PSVS. Economic development, strategic plan, we've set aside some dollars in this year's budget, but we knew it wouldn't get us through all those projects. And so we see this as an opportunity to put some additional funding there that would allow Mr. Soldanya and his team to continue to implement those projects and be that a mixed-use demonstration project or trying to, you know, create a, the tech park or the advanced manufacturing hub. These would be the dollars that we would use to make those projects happen. Note here again, fiscal solvency, the biggest portion there. Next biggest portion is public safety, and then third, economic development. For ongoing, as I noted, we expect to receive twenty-one million dollars more in ongoing revenues than anticipated, but we're not recommending spending all of those or allocating all of those dollars. We think it's more prudent to look at those funds in the annual fiscal year process for next year. And if we do have overages in the current fiscal year at year-end because of the significantly increased number of revenues, those can go towards one-time projects in the following fiscal year, as we did with the twenty-nine million and the twenty million you just saw. But given that there are some significant increases, that gives us a level of confidence that these ongoing revenues are going to be in place into the future. And so we're recommending some strategic opportunities. One is a redevelopment fund for downtown that has been talked about and conceptualized, but we haven't had the ability to put funds into it. And this would be to help close market gaps for projects that don't quite pencil out, but bring some of that redevelopment to downtown. We have similar programs for other areas of the city that are within our economic development strategic plan, as well as ARPA dollars. But this is a program that would specifically speak to downtown. And then lastly, on the position side, we are recommending a number of positions. And we'll walk through some of these fairly quickly, but then spend a little bit of time on the Park Ranger Program as the biggest new investment here. On the police financial services, this is a position that we're in significant sort of backlogs in the police department because we've hired so many new officers and we're beginning so many new initiatives in PD that we're not able to keep up on the administrative side. And Chief Terry acknowledged this as probably the most important position in addressing some of those backlogs and workloads that are not balanced. Secondly, on the technology services, we noted recently in the risk assessment, as well as the grand jury report, as well as our own strategic planning, that we still are not quite up to the ideal standard in technology services as far as employees. And these are the folks that are delivering on the projects for police and fire and economic development and deploying the tools and the technologies to support our frontline workers in delivering the services to the community. Another key piece is that as technology security becomes more and more important, having some leadership-level positions that can make sure that our cybersecurity is well in order for the city is important. The next one, on Clean City and Homeless Cleanup, we have moved pretty quickly, I think, in the scope of things over this last three-year period. We've entered into nearly a dozen contracts with different entities to do cleanups, the downtown ambassadors, and Clean City teams. And we've noticed that we stood it up quickly, but there's an opportunity to have some field supervision, to be more effective, to have eyes on the ground, and to coordinate efforts with other departments. And that's what this position is really about. Next, in the Public Works Department, we've had such a significant increase in the number of capital projects that we're trying to tackle, that we're also experiencing some backlogs. And this position is designed to help us do the work of creating contracts and managing the administration to allow us to do more of that, those capital projects quicker and faster and free up some of the time of working managers that are kind of working down into those roles to really push the actual delivery of the results on our capital improvement projects. And lastly, as we've continued to try and build out our economic development department, we knew that it was an important start, but that we may see some incremental growth over time. These two positions would create an economic development-specific division within the Economic and Community Development Department and support our business success team, whose job is really to make projects get from start to finish and handhold some of our developers and others and be a liaison for them through our city processes to make sure the right things happen. So on this side, you'll see that on the one-time, or excuse me, on the ongoing monies with two-million-dollar allocation, significant investment in economic development on this side. The rest is largely in public safety and a few for infrastructure and fiscal solvency. So with this, I'll ask our Finance Director Randy McKeegan to just walk really quickly through some of these slides. I don't think we need to belabor them much because we've talked about these at length. And given the hour, we'll kind of zip through some of these bigger pieces.
Mayor Go, council members, and as City Manager Clegg said, I will try to be expeditious with these. So I'll cut a few things as we go through. But I will be touching on some of the one-time items that we're requesting that are both funded by PSVS and general fund, first being our enterprise resource planning software. We've touched on this before. Our system is currently aged out. We use this system to manage our financial resources in one, it's called Navoline, but it's one software package. And it was implemented twenty-five years ago. Industry standards or industry research shows that government entities actually go through implementations of new ERPs fifteen, every fifteen, I'm sorry, every ten to fifteen years. So we, our ERP has passed its useful life. So we made some plans. City Manager and finance staff determined we needed to do something. We entered into an agreement with the General Government Finance Officers Association, went into, and they assessed our current system and our processes, and ultimately they came back saying that we needed to replace our ERP. So we entered into that next phase of that project. We released an RFP at the, near the end of 2021. We received over thirteen responses in January of this year, and we're reviewing those. Actually, we'll be done with that review at the end of this week, and we'll be elevating three to four of those, going through some really more in-depth reviews, demos, question and answer sessions, to really find the best fit for us, and ultimately going forward with selecting that product sometime before the end of the fiscal year. City of our size, an ERP costs over twenty million dollars based on analysis. So knowing this was needed, we've already started making enrodes to that, to that effect and covering it. So last year, we set aside six million dollars to cover the ERP. And now we're asking, as it's a one-time allocation, we're asking additional contributions of ten million dollars from PSVS and six million dollars from the general fund, which will ultimately cover the cost, our estimated cost of this product, which will take about eighteen to twenty-four months to actually implement. But the cost of that particular product will be covered with this allocation if the council approves this mid-year allocation. The next item is another area that is, a system that's passed its useful life. Our public safety, our public safety radio system is the primary way of emergency communication for our police and fire departments. And the system is over twenty years old. There's parts that are unable to get new parts for. It's not supported by the manufacturer. So the city, in conjunction with a project with the county of Kern, went forward and are moving forward with a all-encompassing system that will allow us to have one system for both of those agencies, that both of those agencies have antiquated systems. So we're moving forward with the project. We have an RFP out, and the county and the city are reviewing those, and they expect to make a selection sometime next year. And so, again, this was a big-ticket item. We knew we needed it, the estimated cost is currently, I mean, sorry, the initial estimated cost was seventeen to nineteen million dollars. So we set aside twelve million dollars last year, and now we're asking for this council at the mid-year to allocate enough funds to cover the remaining amount of that, five million from the PSVS funds and three million from the general fund. The next item, again, really relates to, talked about fiscal stability. It was really prompted by the success of our existing Section 115 trust for retiree medical and actually the unknown, an uncertainty of our pension program and really the reliance on CalPERS. So seeing that we needed some sort of independence and control of that, we decided that we needed to look at a Section 115 trust, a pension stabilization trust, and build that. So the city has, again, we're building off the success of what we saw with the retiree medical. We don't anticipate the same level of success, but when we started the program in 2007, we had an unfunded liability of less than five percent. I mean, the fund, the fund was, we only had five percent funded in that liability. That was 2007. So over the last fifteen years, we've built up that balance to over ninety million dollars. Last actuarial had the balance of the liability of one-hundred-and-sixteen million. So over fifteen years, we've actually moved from less than five percent to seventy-five percent funded with that program. So again, we're trying to roll that same level of, or some level of success into a rate stabilization fund. So we're going to leverage this, our trust administrator, PARIS, allows us to leverage both trusts so that we have economies of scale, so to speak. So we'll have savings on our investment costs because they look at both the value of the total trust. And then again, we will be able to start building those dollars up, having local control of these funds so that we are not beholden, so to speak, to the, as much by the inability of CalPERS to meet some of its investment goals. So the first initial allocation is four million dollars, two million dollars in the general fund and two million dollars from PSVS. Again, it gives us local control. It also gives us some flexibility. As those funds grow, if CalPERS does not meet its investment goals, its rate of return, expected rate of return, we can draw on those funds as if rates spike. Or if there's an economic downturn, we can draw on those funds if the city itself cannot meet a required contribution. So that's what that trust will allow us to do, again, as it builds up value. And finally, again, we're talking about reserves. I think the council remembers 2018, 19, we entered into, we passed a resolution to really start building reasonable levels of reserves for the city of Bakersfield. And it had really three goals that were in mind in that resolution. It was to address the emergency or cash basis reserve that we currently had and build it to a level of two months of general fund operating expenditures. And then the next goal was to build our facility reserves, the hope of building at least five million dollars, add at least five million dollars to those reserves by 2024, 25. Again, going back, the goal originally was to have by this year, meeting that two-month reserve goal. And again, we already talked about it, that resolution also talked about building that reserve, quote-unquote, in a pension stabilization trust fund. So we are looking to start building, we've met the goal of the sixty-day reserve already, one year in ahead of time. And so now we're moving towards that five-million-plus-dollar goal of facility reserve. These funds will be used for unanticipated, unexpected needs of our reserves throughout the city. So we're asking that the council approve one million dollars from the PSVS fund and half a million dollars from the general fund to begin that funding and meet that goal that we've laid out in that resolution. And finally, this kind of lays out the success we've seen in our reserve plan. So before we approve that resolution in 2018, 19, you see the balances in 2017, 18 were just under seventeen million dollars. So the blue section is what we had in reserves for general fund. The yellow section was the facility reserves. And so that orange section is what we've added through PSVS funds, and that green section, that green And that green, that green line is that two-month goal of General Fund operating. So what you see here is, in the three years since we passed that resolution, we've moved from a reserve of $17 million to an excess of $52 million. And as you see, that green line has been passed with the reserves at the end of last fiscal year. So we were, again, ahead of schedule on that particular plan. So with that, I am available for questions. I tried to expedite that one. If you have questions, I'm definitely available for that.
Do you want to finish your presentation first, Mr. Clegg?
I'm going to pass it over to...
We can entertain questions for Mr. McKeegan now, if desired, but there are more slides to go through.
Much more.
Okay. And before I just hit the next slide, I would reflect really quickly for council that in the prior PSVS annual budgets, we expended significant monies towards ERP, radios, and reserves. And those are one-time expenses that are largely now knocked out. Congratulations to council. And that means more projects available in future PSVS years. I think that's the good news that we'll see at our annual budget for next year is that we can look at some of these other one-time projects in, you know, that balance that we're keeping as unallocated to ongoing to do, you know, the work of economic development and infrastructure, et cetera. So as one of the more notable ongoing allocations, want to speak a bit more on park rangers. And so we have some slides to go through that piece. No surprise to anyone, I think, that, you know, we have significant issues in our parks. And so our Parks Director tried to take a hard look and say, you know, what, what are some of the options in front of us to address some of these tough issues? I think we recognize that there's not a silver bullet and that any program may have some challenges, but looked at what other cities are doing. We looked at what the county's doing with their program, what North of the River does. We did look at, excuse me, a number of cities, and some of those have even been mentioned today. We looked at Santa Maria. We looked at some others in Southern California. We looked at Modesto as they're starting a program and tried to understand what folks are doing. There are some different varieties of what park ranger programs look like in other areas. And we also looked hard at, could we do this through private security? What are some of the pros and cons with having private security try to do this work? And I think ultimately, there are different ways to get at this challenge, and we've recommended one of those ways tonight, but also recognize that there may be, you know, feedback and interest in honing a program that gets at these core objectives. So what we've proposed would be a park ranger program, that they would be eyes and ears and a presence, a proactive, persistent presence in our parks, not just on a complaint basis or responding, but they would be patrolling in parks, enforcing rules, deterring vandalism, working with city staff that are in our parks. Also, a peacekeeping presence, talking with individuals and engaging on a regular basis with individuals, creating safety in our parks for visitors and staff. There sometimes are questions and issues about, you know, who's reserved what, and they would settle some of those disputes. And then a huge role in staying ahead of encampments forming in our parks. To give a little more of some specific examples, we would expect our park, and we'll have some slides that show some of the hours, but they would be available from very early in the morning until late at night. And they would open and close our parks every day. I think that's one of our challenges is, on a complaint basis, we're not staying ahead of some issues. And we also are looking to create some infrastructure that will help our rangers be able to close the parks at night and ensure that folks are out of parking lots that may be internal to the park and not lingering late in the parks and carrying, you know, forward into late-night hours when other activities, you know, may be more likely. Also, a key element of addressing encampments, and I would reflect for the council, that being in a park, even with some of your belongings or a shopping cart, is not illegal. But once someone starts to create an encampment, that is something that can be noticed readily and provide a notice to vacate, and our rangers would be available to do that, issue citations and initiate cleanup. And we'll talk a little bit about coordination with other entities in a moment, but they would have a role to do cleanup in the parks and pick up litter, debris, and certain bulky items. Also, as eyes and ears in our parks, we would be asking them, anytime they see a drinking fountain, trash can, that's out of repair graffiti, that they would report all those issues on a daily basis. And we're not having the lag and waiting for a council member or a community member to let us know what some of those issues are. And then I think for many of the interactions in our parks, there will be individuals who will be responsive to requests to not block access, to leash their pets and have that presence in the parks. We know that there will be some instances that will be more tense, and we'll speak to that in a moment. But these park rangers would be uniformed, utility belts and certain tools that would allow them to defend themselves and to create a safety presence in our parks. And then lastly, also, we hope that there are some opportunities that are positive that are connecting our park patrons to other services and resources. A really important part is that we know there are many other employees that are doing work either today in our parks, and they're, they're really hustling. I think our rapid response teams have demonstrated their ability to address encampments in parks, and they've moved pretty quickly on those. Flood would be a direct asset and connect to addressing homeless encampments. Our Clean City Teams and BPD Impact Teams are regularly in our parks. And so the intent would be to have very close coordination with all of those. They would have direct dispatch access to BPD. They would have radio dispatch access to BPD Impact Teams. They would participate in our weekly coordination meetings, and that the park ranger supervisor would coordinate with other supervisors in the city to ensure that the cleanups and the activities are efficient and streamlined. I would suggest, too, that this does free up our impact team and our code enforcement teams to be focusing on other areas. And if they're able to address 50 or 80% of issues in parks before making that first call, then that's all time saved to those important teams to do priority work. And then I already noted that, again, these, they would have police powers to the extent that they can issue citations and that they can provide a notice to vacate. They would not, they would be able, inasmuch as they're issuing citations, that is technically a detention, but they would not have physical arrest authorities as currently proposed. But that is, I know, a question that we can look at and address in how we implement this program. Excuse me. So we talked about also the ability to pilot this. Do we try it with four? Do we try it with six? But as we look at some of our challenges that are in front of us that are really significant, we felt like it's hard to make a real notable impact and truly measure this without a significant force. And so we've recommended 18 park rangers. The park ranger, three, is a supervisor role and analyst that would help us to organize and coordinate some of their responses, as well as some other projects for the department. It would be provided, again, vehicles and equipment. And the number that we've shared, the 1.2 million dollar number, that is the one-time cost for equipment and vehicles, as well as the personnel costs for the remainder of this fiscal year, but would reflect it as a significant ongoing investment of $2.4 million of personnel costs on an annual basis. To give some sense of some of the operations, of course, all operations are adjustable, and there could be evolution to this, but as intended, we would again have rangers from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM in two different shifts, making sure that we're there early and late, as noted. They would be working on weekends, and that there would be times each day where there's overlap that would allow for additional patrols, as well as every Wednesday, there would be higher staffing so that we could work on some of the larger encampments, training or notable issues. Let me shift gears to the next slide that also talks a little bit about patrol. And so even with 18, that sounds like a big number, but we have 61 parks in the city of Bakersfield, and the ability to patrol regularly would be stretched at that number. And so we see a need to focus on the areas of the data points to where we have our biggest issues. And you can see from this list here that there is a, more of a focus on parks that are adjacent to the River Parkway area and the Parkway itself, because we have significant challenges there, as well as our city patrol, which touches our target, our hotspot areas within each ward of the city. To give a sense of what that does get us, we have, that would mean that there's, there are four rangers patrolling the target parks daily. That means three hours, or excuse me, that means the other parks would be about three hours a day, but that puts them in, in the other parks, you know, either, they're going to be actually working, we're proposing four, 10, so there's seven hours in other parks each day. And that even those parks that are not on hotspot lists would still see some patrols three, four times a week and on a complaint basis. And again, Wednesdays would be for some of the larger initiatives. Training is going to be really important. This is another area where we could take some of the feedback and direction, but we would need to ensure, because they are going to be in challenging situations, having a field training officer equivalent program to make sure that they have the skills and abilities to do their work. Crisis intervention, as well as working with some of our partners that do training on mental health, substance abuse and homeless engagement, so they have those skill sets in working with individuals. Again, there are some post-800-level courses that they would need to be trained in for issuing citations, as well as CPR, first aid, and the use of chemical agents and baton training, as they would be armed with pepper spray and batons as currently proposed today. But strong training is really important, especially if they're going to be in challenging situations. So there are a few more slides on ARPA, but I think I can move through those fairly quickly and then move to questions for council on, on all of these items. So with our ARPA appropriations, again, we received $47 million. We actually have not received a second installment of $47 million, and we're not proposing to appropriate all of those funds at this time. We've already, as I mentioned earlier, appropriated $7 million for direct expenses. We're proposing another $7 million for direct expenses because we actually anticipate about $21 million worth of direct expenses. In the total package, this would get us to 14. We would do the third $7 million installment after we get the second tranche of funding from the federal government. For all of these ARPA programs, it's important to note that these are some pretty big dollar numbers. And any one of these projects, as we get specific, if it were a contract with an outside entity, if it were a program that we're running as a city, that those would come back to the city council for approval for the very specific programs. And so let me give you an example on the tourism industry, the $4 million there. We've proposed setting aside $2 million that helps us to offset the operating costs at our arena, similar as we have done with the CARES funding the last two years, because their revenues are so significantly impacted because of the shutdowns and the inability to hold events at the same scale as is normal. We have been covering some of just operating costs, that's utilities, the city staff, solid waste costs at the arena, and we would still hold aside $2 million there. At the end of the day, if ASM, you know, doesn't collect those revenues, it hits the city another way anyway, and this is a way to stay ahead of that using ARPA funding. But that, again, would come to city council. Also, under the tourism, we're proposing two $1 million programs. One would be a program where we would do a request for proposals that would solicit concepts to stimulate tourism and, and other programs that are entertainment industry-based, that these are for entities that have not been able to be as active during the pandemic. But for example, you know, maybe an art nonprofit would be able to propose a program that would provide some entertainment and art to re-stimulate the tourism economy, but those would be based on proposals that we would receive and vet as a city. The second piece would be a $1 million program. We're asking Visit Bakersfield to go and identify some things that are still not open. Let's say Crystal Palace, it's not open seven days a week. How do we approach some of these key individuals and say, what, what could we do to help get things back open and stimulate some of this tourism and entertainment industry and work out specific concepts and proposals with those folks? So going back up to the top of that list there, our Violence Intervention Program, this is actually a specific set aside that the federal government identified for funding eligibility. And this would allow us, we've, we've actually applied for a $3 million grant with the state. We would use this funding as a match to that grant to expand our Gun Violence Intervention Program that we've begun between our, the city manager's office and the police department and expand those services. Affordable housing, these dollars would go into our same Notice of Funding Availability, along with the $5 million in the budget from PSVS, to get more projects done for affordable housing. Brendan Julian Navigation Center, this is actually the, the same funding that you saw to do the expansion. It is an ARPA-eligible expense and allows us to fund that from here as opposed to PSVS and save those funds for other projects. And then on the blighted properties, this is the concept where we know we have some properties that are challenging from a code standpoint. We're trying to work through receivership or other options or abatements, but it's very slow. One of the fastest things we can do is try and go to the tax sale and other properties and pick these up and move them quicker into affordable housing projects. And then lastly, we have a $50,000 home access program that allows us to help seniors or low-income families put arm, or excuse me, guardrails or other things to keep them in their homes or improve their home access. It's a very small program at $50,000 out of CDBG, and this would allow us to do a lot more of that same program in more homes, is the proposal. The second slide, the food bank, we've talked about this before. The food bank expansion is in, in the planning phase. We've actually provided some CDBG funding for that project, but there is still a funding shortfall. And with this 1.2 million dollars, we're to help them close that gap to build that very large and notable expansion. The Blue Zones Wellness Initiative, I know council's been briefed on this. This is a program that gets at it a citywide basis, creating better health and wellness outcomes. And this really would be treated as a set aside. I think it's important for council to know that this wouldn't be money that is automatically allocated, but it would be available for us to fund projects that are identified by the Blue Zone Initiative that would come back to council for approval. The healthcare industry, we know that there's been other funding, you know, provided by the county to help with traveling nurses, and that this wouldn't necessarily offset all of the challenges and, and the costs that they're facing. But it is an ability for us to support some of the operating expenses of our hospitals that have really been the front lines during the pandemic. Our workforce development and job training, this is consistent with our Economic Development Strategic Plan and some of our efforts to create more jobs and apprenticeships into our key industries and into our trades. And so this would be funding that would allow us to design a program to create some of those apprenticeships and, and job placements into these key target industries. The facade improvement program is to have funding set aside to go to our business districts and disadvantaged neighborhoods and really spruce up a lot of those facades and storefronts. This program, I think we will fund at a higher degree than just this million dollars. I think there's, we could, we could spend that really quickly. And out of the second tranche of funding, we'll be recommending additional dollars for both this and the economic opportunity areas. I think these are really big opportunities to help revitalize our business districts in the qualified census tracts. And the same for that, that final funding allocation. Those, all three of those last items are really about sprucing up our business districts in, in our disadvantaged neighborhoods through those three programs. So I know we've covered a lot of ground there. I'm actually going to just note, under, well, real quickly, under ARPA, to put things into context... context, homelessness and fiscal solvency, huge funding allocations there. Revitalization has, and public safety have some notable elements. The ARPA funds are interesting, because we cannot spend them on many infrastructure projects. There are some ability around utilities, that's water, sewer, and storm. But outside of that, they largely are more program-based, and so you see a bigger portion here around quality of life and amenities. So a smaller item in your mid-year, just for reflection, is that we actually had a couple of enterprise pieces that we don't want to get lost in the shuffle. In our solid waste division, because of 1383, we have some significant needs to be able to meet the compliance of that, and it's one additional position there. And then on the sewer enterprise fund, it is, the fund is able to cover the costs for this, but because of some of the work around our lift stations and, and other projects, we've had a backlog around electrical issues and hiring some technicians would allow us to move forward some of our regular CIP maintenance at a faster pace, and that is needed in the enterprise fund, and the enterprise fund can support that. So I'm going to skip forward actually to this slide that really puts everything into one place and leave it there for, for reflection, but then this is a time we would welcome questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. City Clerk, do you have a blue memo that you need to read at this point before we go to council?
Mayor, go, yes, thank you. We've received two staff memorandums regarding this item. Transmitting correspondence received regarding both the park ranger and Blue Zone proposals. All correspondence was in favor of both proposals, except for one, but that was opposed to the park ranger proposal.
Thank you. And now Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks for bringing me around, Mayor. It's been a long one. So park rangers. First of all, I want to thank staff for thinking out of the box. Do we need safety in our parks? Absolutely. But kind of how we've gotten here and gotten this 11th hour briefing on the program, I think we've kind of put the cart before the horse a little bit on this program. I believe Measure N received the briefing before the council. And I have quite a few questions about the program. So let me start off here. I listened to the folks today, and they were talking about several things that they felt that this is going to, this program would help prevent or stop. And it included thefts, assaults, threatened with weapons, arson, chased by cars, vandalism, park fights. The program as initiated, I think is more in a security realm or observe and report. Granted, the city manager said that they'd have police powers to issue citations, if I quoted you right there, Christian?
Correct.
And I don't know how that would necessarily work, coming out of the law enforcement realm, having police powers and, and not being sworn. So as you're an observe and report security officer technically, let's say you can write Let me just talk about pay for a second. So at the ranger level that's being proposed, out of the staff documents, the, the park ranger one is going to be with benefits about $118,000. Now, with extrapolating that out and just taking a park ranger one and two position, top 401 would be about 70K, top being a 402 would be about 77,000. And then add in benefits, purse cost, and everything else, which takes you for the one, the 118,000. Now we're kind of in the, the air of a police officer. I mean, we're probably 5%, 8% off from having a sworn officer position. Now, it was brought up North of the River as one of the models that we've looked at to possibly frame this program. And today I talked to the HR manager over at North of the River, Esther, very nice lady, about their program and about what they pay their, their security officers over there. So she told me that North of the River, a security or the ranger makes 30K, and their supervisor or lead makes 38,000. And they have a supervisor that's going to make 58,000. So when we get to really what seems like disparity between kind of the pay of a sworn or almost a sworn position and the duties of something to be more in line with an observe and report security officer. Now, whatever we build, and I'm, like I said, I'm for security in our parks, but whatever we build, I think we need to build the right thing from the get-go and not have, you know, an ad hoc program and try and change gears as we initiate a program midstream. I also talked to, and if we go the other direction, as far as having some sort of sworn, I talked to the chief of the LA City Park Rangers yesterday, a very knowledgeable gentleman, 35 years with LAPD, retired as a command lieutenant. Now he oversees the park ranger program there. He says he has 30 park rangers and several security officers within that program. Their park rangers are sworn, they go through the LAPD academy, but they do not carry firearms. They still have light bars in their cars, they can make arrests, they have the tools that essentially you were talking about, minus firearms. Now, there's a push within LA City, and I talked to the council, one of the council members, his office, regarding a push to arm their rangers. And I just want to quote out of a local article that was in December. And it basically states, "Two Los Angeles council members are pushing to arm the 30 park rangers in response to violent crimes perpetrated in the parks." And there's a quote, "When there's violent, when there's a violent suspect in a park, rangers need to pull out and call the police to respond. We cannot wait to bury a ranger to take action." So getting back to the statements that were made regarding the thefts, arson, fights, people with weapons. And in fact, Chief, if you can come up here, I just want to ask you a few questions too here in a second regarding our various crimes in the parks. That we need to decide which, which way we're going. If we're going to have sworn personnel in the parks, fine, we're probably in that same salary range right now as, as we are with a police officer, or we just expand the police department, because we know that we're probably going to need more than 100 officers at some point anyway. Or we do the North of the River approach, and if we do that, I don't think we need to pay police officer salaries to do it. We need to be more in line with the North of the River Park Ranger program. Chief, can you tell me really what kind of crimes we've had in the parks? Have we had homicides in any of our parks?
Say that again.
Have we had homicides, murders in any of our parks?
Yes, we have.
Have we had sexual assaults in any of our parks?
We have.
And then we had, what about robberies?
Yes.
Okay, and I already met, that, that's good, Chief. Thank you so much. So we have some serious issues within our parks, serious crimes. And having a, a park ranger with pepper spray and a baton, when the perception, and it, let's say a marked unit, it says ranger on it, that there's going to be a perception within the community that these people are going to be able to do more than they possibly can. Now, getting to the citation process, and I don't necessarily want to drag the city attorney into this, but I think there's a gray line between what they can do legally as far as arrests and citations. Let's just talk about vandalism for a second. Under Penal Code Section 594, it's a misdemeanor, and that misdemeanor would entail arrest, even though you're releasing that person on a citation, it's still effectively an arrest. And talking to the LA Chief Ranger, when I talked to him about what their security can do versus their, their sworn personnel, albeit they're not armed, and he was very nice, very professional, but he said, "You need to be careful," I think was how he phrased it, "on, you know, what those folks would do." He goes, "We would not allow any of our security officers to issue a citation, except maybe a parking ticket. Only our sworn personnel would do something like that." He also talked about the span and control when I talked about the, was it 18, 18 rangers or is it 19 and 18, or 18 rangers and one supervisor?
The latter, correct.
Okay. He said that span and control would probably be a pretty slippery, slippery slope as far as what your rangers are doing in the field and how things are, are going to take place. He said just doing an evaluation for that many people once a year is going to bury that, that one supervisor, let alone doing training, conducting, you know, stuff in the field. If there's a complaint regarding internal affairs investigation, we have a complaint on one of these rangers, and how are those things going to take in place? So I really think that this needs to be vetted out further, besides being done from the dais. And I really think it belongs in a committee to decide what direction we need to go. I think it needs to be over in personnel to do that. And I have a few, few other questions, I think, that need to be answered if it, if it gets over there. So starts with, I, I think the council needs to know and the committee needs to know really the difference in authority between our police officers, our code enforcement officers, and our park rangers. Who can do what and when? Under what authority or Penal Code section, the park rangers will be able to operate? What areas of the Bakersfield municipal code they will be able to enforce? What kind of training they will have to mitigate city liability? Will they have a mini academy with 832 that at least give them some powers of arrest? Or will they have a full post academy? Or are they just going to have a security guard card? Of which, North of the River, they have a security guard card and 832 possibly. They said they like to hire, you know, retired law enforcement, like from Corrections and other places. But still, they're paying them sort of in the, a little bit higher than a security officer, but definitely not in the, the realm of, of really a police officer. And real quick, too, when I looked up the LA City Park Ranger, again, those sworn personnel, and we're talking about the city of Los Angeles, which is obviously a more expensive place to live, this salary isn't far off from what their park rangers are making. If and when a complaint is made against a ranger, who's going to handle that potential follow-up? Are park rangers going to have body cameras? And that basically does it. And I'm going to listen to my colleagues, but I, I'm going to make a motion right now that this is referred over to the Personnel Committee to be vetted out better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start high level regarding the mid-year budget overall. We have a $97 million allocation tonight for us. This is historic, and it's significant for the city of Bakersfield. I think all of us in the community should be excited and proud of what we're doing tonight for the city of Bakersfield. I hear from my constituents all the time the, the concerns that vary from the unhoused to affordable housing, to safety, to revitalization of our urban core. But I also hear from people who say we have to be, and they expect us to be fiscally conservative. And I'm proud that we've met our 60-day reserve. I think we should, we should celebrate that. I'm proud that in tonight's budget, in our general fund budget, 70 mil, excuse me, $7 million will be returned to the fund balance. Half a million dollars will be placed in the city facility reserve, and $2 million will be invested in our Section 115 pension trust. That's $9.5 million in our, in our, just our general sales tax. That's a, that's 25% of the general, of the general fund additional revenues that we're allocating tonight. On top of that, PSVS, we have $2 million that's going into Section 115, another $1 million to our city facility reserve fund. So for me, that's, that's, that's pretty smart, fiscally. We're being conservative, we're being strategic, we're thinking about our future. And thank God that we have the opportunity to do this right now. So this, this is a good time for the city of Bakersfield, and I think this is the time where we need to pursue all of these initiatives, recognizing that our city is growing, it's, we are faced with big city challenges, and we need to pursue things. None of these initiatives, though, are going to be perfect on day one. And sometimes we gotta, we gotta move into things and tweak them, and just like we've done with every other project we pursued. We, we analyze the pros and the cons, what's worked, what hasn't, and then we get better. So with that, I want to turn our attention to the park ranger program for just a minute. I have a few questions myself. First, I want to start with Chief Terry. Because public safety is obviously our number one priority in the community. We hear from people all the time about concerns related to parks. Let me ask you point blank, do you support the park ranger program?
Yes.
Okay, and why?
Like you, I hear very often complaints about public safety issues related to the park. The reality is our, our entire community has significant public safety challenges, and police resources have been stretched for many years. And really, law enforcement in some respects has become a safety net for many, many issues across our community and across our society, and that has caused us to be stretched so thin. So yeah, I'm very sensitive to that. I'm very sensitive to what is occurring in our parks. Like Councilmember Parlier accurately said, that there have been some serious incidents in our park, in our parks across the city for, for, for many years. But day to day, there are many instances where a constant, consistent, high-visibility patrol would remedy many, many of the issues that are facing our community. Fear, or crime and the fear of crime cause significant harm across the community. In particular, I think it's relevant to the parks, that the fear of the park safety or not being safe in the park is a significant impact on community members utilizing the park. And I think a high-visibility patrol that engages those that don't wish to use the park as it's, as it's intended. And there will be incidents, because not everybody will be cooperative, and, and I can certainly envision instances where we need to come to the assistance of the rangers. But I think far and above that, there is a, a great opportunity to have an effective and efficient use of city resources. And I think the park ranger program can fit a lot of those needs, specifically around public safety in the parks and making them usable and be the amenity that our city wants them to be.
So even though there's no arresting authority, even though they're not sworn officers, you still find value in the, in the park ranger program?
They are not sworn officers, but they will be able to arrest. They have the same powers of arrest that a code enforcement does, not a physical arrest. They cannot physically arrest someone and take them to jail or anything like that, but they will be able to cite for violations of the municipal code, just like code enforcement officers do.
Okay. Thank you, sir. There are many issues in, in our parks. One issue is the, the presence of the unhoused individuals, homeless individuals who are in our parks often. We, we get complaints. Ms. Gennaro, I have a question for you. The park rangers would not be able to by law remove individuals for merely being in the park during park hours?
Physically remove, Councilmember Gonzalez? That is correct. They would not be able to physically remove them.
Okay. Or ask them to leave?
Um, no, I think they can ask them to leave.
On what grounds?
Depends on the situation. But I wouldn't want to preclude the park ranger from being able to ask someone to leave. Maybe they're using the equipment in a way that wasn't meant to be, wasn't meant to be used. Maybe, again, maybe they are perceived as harassing an individual. I think oftentimes you can ask the chief, but I think oftentimes law enforcement simply asks people to leave. There's nothing wrong with asking someone to leave a park.
Okay, but, but merely sitting in the park with, with my shopping cart and all of my belongings, I have, I have a right to be in the park.
Under that hypothetical, you are correct.
Okay. And even a sworn officer would not be able to... And even a sworn officer would not be able to ask me to leave if I'm simply sitting in the park?
That would not be recommended by the city attorney, correct.
Okay. My point is that even those who are experiencing homelessness still have a right to enjoy our parks during park hours in the appropriate way.
That's correct.
My experience has been that when, I visit parks often, when I see issues in the park myself, it's related to trash surrounding park equipment, picnic areas, or loose dogs. Mr. Anthony, if you will describe sort of the approach that you envision with those ancillary issues that are really detrimental to some of the families and especially the children who are trying to enjoy the playground equipment in our parks?
Thank you. Good evening. That is correct. It's kind of been proven in this industry that eyes on our assets, a daily engagement in the parks, a presence in the parks does go a long way with not just presenting a peaceful atmosphere, but also deterring a lot of the behaviors, obviously, that we don't want to see in our parks. This program that I'm recommending is nothing new, and it varies from city to city, both the salaries and the scope of work. And I believe we have a unique opportunity to address specifically for the city of Bakersfield the unique issues and challenges that we have here.
Thank you. I, you know, listening to the stories, it's hard to ignore some of the real issues that are facing our parks here and now and not do anything about it here and now, especially given our opportunities before us with this mid-year budget. It was mentioned tonight, the Cancer Memorial is destroyed at Beach Park, destroyed. Our sister-city gardens are, these were supposed to be monuments to other cities around the world. Those are being destroyed. The Beale Park Amphitheater, historic structure, constantly damaged. Playground structures in Jastro Park, Jefferson Park, Beale Park, Saunders, constantly damaged. We heard that Wayside Restaurant was on fire recently. That's a common occurrence. I don't think we have the luxury of time right now to wait to study this issue and to try to find the perfect program. We do have an opportunity with resources, with dollars, to start a program. I'm in support of ideas of studying how we can improve the program over time, but I simply can't wait, in good conscience, can't wait around for that. And so, I'm going to make a motion tonight that we adopt the mid-year, including the park ranger program.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor.
What was your motion specifically, to adopt all the mid-year budget, including the park rangers? Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith, go ahead.
Good now? Thank you. I'll start with the big picture, too. It's amazing. I've been on the Council ten years now, and, you know, we've never had these kind of opportunities to, we've done without, and there's deferred maintenance, and there's the radio system falling apart, I mean, the list is so long. And this continues to address it that, you know, we did in the budget this year. So, it is very exciting, big picture. And I agree with Councilman Gonzalez and staff, that, you know, the PSVS, five years ago, when we went, we said, okay, voters, you know, do you want to spend more money in order to have a safer, better quality-of-life city? And the voters, conservative Bakersfield voters, said yes. And so, we don't, it's not time now, five years later, to say, well, you know, let's talk about this for another year. Let's wait. You know, the safety of the community is what we need to move forward on. So, I'm excited about the program. Most of my ward is in NOR, and I get very few complaints in the NOR area. And, you know, the first rule of redevelopment or making things safe is eyes. You reclaim an area by having people there and having eyes. You don't have to have guns, you just, you need people, and they can talk to them, move them along. So, yeah, it's exciting, and I'm excited about the whole budget, so I'm in favor of the motion as made. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm going to focus on the park ranger program myself. I want to thank Mr. Anthony because he is thinking out of the box, and he's come to this city to try to find new solutions, and he's seen the problems that we're having. And there is no doubt, we heard the testimonies from so many tonight, that have had very negative experiences in our parks. And for those people, I'm really sorry that you've even had to go through that. I have to say, though, that I feel, we didn't hear about this until just maybe six weeks ago as a council. And as my colleague, Councilmember Parlier, said, that the presentation wasn't given to us as a council until tonight. We've had phone conversations, I had a phone conversation, but other than that, I didn't have anything in front of me, as did the Measure N Committee. It's been in the newspaper, it's been on the radio now, without us as a council even getting the proper information to be able to make an educated decision. So, I think we definitely need to be looking at our park situation very seriously and come up with the right solutions. But I think it's important for us to have properly vetted this before it just came tonight, because I feel like I've been a little caught here tonight. I do agree with my colleague, Parlier, again, that I feel that these salaries need to be These police officers in the room tonight, they've gone through a year-and-a-half training. We haven't been told, I don't know exactly how many weeks' worth of training. Mr. Anthony, could you answer what the training situation is for these people?
Yes, thank you. Right now, we are proposing a specialized training that will be about four weeks, and if I'm not mistaken, it's very similar, or maybe a little bit more than code, which is also the salary. We felt like we have the classification here in the city, and we modeled it. Human Resources has done a tremendous job in trying to find kind of the right fit, and some of the duties are going to be very similar with code, and also some things that'll be more specific to the Police Department. So, Christian touched on a lot of that. We have already engaged with a couple of individuals that are consultants, and we'll put together a package, again, that will be very specific to get at some of the issues that we're proposing. But right now, it's about a four-to-six-week program.
Okay, thank you. I've always been told by my father, who was a naval officer, that if you give responsibility to someone, you've got to give them proper authority. And that's one of my concerns, that these rangers are not going to have the authority that they're going to need in some of the situations they could find themselves in, as in some of our guests here tonight shared, that they have been involved with. The other thing is, I don't want the public to get a false sense of security that every park is going to have a ranger in it, you know, twelve hours a day, because that's not what's going to be happening. And so, that's something that the public really needs to understand, so they don't go to their park and, where's the ranger that we were promised, you know, to where they understand, educated on that? And I wanted to ask the chief, or just kind of throw this out there, because I hate for you to have to come back up to the podium, but I just kind of want to know, if one of these rangers encountered the perpetrator that was chasing the two women by car in the park while the other one's hiding, do you feel that these park rangers are really going to be prepared to be able to handle that kind of situation? Or some of these other things that we've heard tonight?
Mayor Go, Councilmember Gray, thank you for the question. That's not what the program is, and so, they would not. And Mr. Anthony and I have discussed this, that part of that four-to-six-week training, the orientation, the definition of the scope of work, the work in crisis intervention, de-escalation, and all of those kinds of things, will go into the training so that they have an understanding of what is appropriate in the scope of their work and in their responsibilities, and what is not. And some of what you just described is certainly not. In the scope of work of a ranger, they would have direct radio communication to us or telephone communication. They would have both of those things directly to the Police Department. So, that would be a situation where they would sit and observe and be a witness. But that would be the scope of the work, and so, that particular scenario is not one that they would be directed to take action in.
Okay, thank you. Moving to another issue on the mid-year budget, the Blue Zones. I believe that, I mean, we've, some of these things that we're talking about are very, very serious, and we don't have nearly as much money allocated towards those more serious issues than we do the Blue Zone issue, which we've got four million dollars allocated, which our city manager said, that doesn't mean that's all going to get spent, but it is sitting there. Well, the people now are going to expect that money, if you allocate it to Blue Zones, they're going to expect that. And then, we had only two million being allocated for workforce development and job training, which to me seems a lot more important to allocate funds towards instead of the Blue Zones. So, I would like to see money come out of the Blue Zone allocation, and a significant amount of money, because that's not even something that is, you know, we're doing, they're even prepared for. They're still trying to raise private funding for that, too, because I had talked to the Committee. And then also, take that money and put it into workforce development and job training, because that's what needs to happen here more for economic development and so forth in our community. So, I feel like some of these numbers, some of this money that's being allocated is kind of upside down, and maybe we need to look at that a little bit stronger. So, if, Andre, city manager, Christian, if Andre's motion passed, does that mean then we don't have the opportunity now to tweak any of these numbers as they are presented to us?
I'll defer to the city attorney further, but the answer would be yes. If that motion was voted on now and passed, it would be the budgeted in its entirety. And that we wouldn't contemplate other adjustments, although additional motions can be made.
I agree with Mr. Clay. Councilmember Gonzalez's motion was pretty clear. It was a motion to adopt all of the mid-year recommendations as provided to you tonight.
Then I would ask my colleague Gonzalez if he would consider tweaking his motion a little bit to give us a little bit of leeway here, because it's really hard for me to vote on this when there is zero leeway.
Councilmember Gray, how would you like, what would you propose the alternative to be? I'm more than happy to entertain additional ideas.
I appreciate that.
And amend my motion. But if you can provide me with some guidance as to how you would like to see the motion be amended?
Okay. Well, I would like to get those numbers from Blue Zones, some numbers there into workforce development. I think that's a more important issue in our community right now. But my colleague, Councilmember Freeman, he also has some things that he would like. So, before you make that, change that motion, let's let anybody else speak on that if we could. Wouldn't that be okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're next.
So, I agree with you, Bob. You know, if we're going to have the NOR program, let's have the NOR program. I don't think we need to pay them cop salaries to do it. Let's pay them what NOR pays them. So, I was looking at the county ranger, which is fully sworn, full peace officer, police officer powers, and the county rangers make forty-six thousand. A senior county ranger, or actually, when I talk to them, they fall into a supervisor class, like a senior officer here, makes fifty-six thousand. A lateral sheriff's deputy makes seventy-seven thousand. That's the same as the park ranger, too. So, I hold on my motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I'm, I want to try to craft something Council Gonzalez might agree to, to get some of this done tonight. First of all, I am totally in favor of the park ranger program, but I agree with Council Parlier. I want to see it done right. I've put a lot of programs together in my life, and sometimes I get real enthusiastic, and I want to do it real quick, and I'm kind of one of these impatient guys, and I need people around me who say, now, wait a minute, let's be sure we get the details right, so we don't go out there and do it wrong. So, I'm hoping in a minute we can include the park ranger program in our approval, but that, you can help me later craft this, Jenny, but that we can send it to Personnel Committee so that they can work out some of the bugs on the exact salary ranges and determine, I hope we can delegate to them, is this a sworn officer or not? I didn't hear one person come up with an example of something that didn't need a sworn officer. No one stood up and said, I want them to call for backup, and they might get there half an hour later. I hear from my constituents, I want safety, and they're not, they want somebody who can do something. They're not really worried about the guy who dumps his trash when he shouldn't off his picnic table. They're worried about the fight that breaks out, the belligerence, the guy on the motorcycle down the curve of a parkway who shines them off, the people creating dangerous situations, the perception that it's not safe for me and my children to go walk through the park. They want somebody who's serious, taken seriously. So, personally, I lean toward the sworn officers. I think it, and if not, then we're diverting, you know, we say we have it. How many people, a hundred people waiting on nine eleven for calls, and they're all priority one, two, three? Where do we have time to pull our police resources off to come over and handle a park problem? When they're so busy, they can't, they got people waiting hours on nine-one-one right now. So, I don't want to divert our police resources. I want people personally, who have enough authority and training to handle the situation in the parks, and give our citizens a perception that it is safe for you to go to the park, or as safe as any city could make it. So, I'm hoping we can just approve it, but send it for details to Personnel Committee. I'm also generally in favor of almost everything on the general budget, but like my colleague to my left, Councilman Gray, I looked at the priorities of the city, and I look especially at affordable housing and the downtown redevelopment and the facade programs, the incentive programs, and say, I have four million in Blue Zones, and I don't mind Blue Zones. I don't mind reserving money for Blue Zones, but I'm not ready to put four million there when we, whatever we have in affordable housing won't get us very far. We have a crisis in affordable housing in Bakersfield. I'd like, if we had four million, I'd like at least two million dumped in that affordable housing, certainly have to have a real project. affordable housing, certainly have to have real projects that's in allocation. I might want another million in the downtown incentives or facade program. Notice all this goes to other wards than mine, but that's all, but I don't mind that. I don't know if, if, Christian, you tell, do we have enough in the job training? You put 2 million, I believe. Do you need 2 and 1/2 or did you short it or do you really have enough?
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I do think that there's opportunity to spend more in workforce development. Some of that we contemplated coming in, that second tranche of ARP funding. I do think that there's more opportunities around workforce development than even 2 or 4 million, but it could use more, yes. And I'll take the opportunity.
But you, but we have another round here and you feel there'll be enough that you can take more then?
Yes, I would agree. Also, there's a question of just how much can we really stand up in the timeframe in front of us?
Yeah.
Like, it would take us a while just to spend the 2 million.
Okay. I get the picture. I think 2 million for now is probably enough because they're going to have trouble spending it all. And let's wait for the next round and put more in there if city manager suggests it. For now, I'd ask Councilman Gonzalez if he would agree to two modifications. One is that we approve the ranger program, but we send it to Personnel Committee for hashing out the details on salaries and sworn officers or not. Second, that we take of the 4 million for Blue Zones, we put 2 million in affordable housing, 1 million in downtown incentives, and we save 1 million for Blue Zones, which could increase in the second tranche, but that we ask that the Blue Zones come back to us with something really specific. My problem is I don't know what it's going to be spent on. We like specific things up here. If it had said, hey, we're going to do an edible garden like Barbara Grimm's on the east side of town that costs a million bucks, sounds great, something to help us with obesity. I'm all for that, but I want, I want specifics. And if there's a big program that takes three more million, let's put it in the second round. So I don't want to kill the program. I just want to know more about it and I know urgently we need money for affordable housing in our downtown. So with those modifications, would you be agreeable, Councilman Gonzalez?
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Yes, I'll modify my motion to approve the, to adopt the mid-year budget update, approving the park ranger program, but sending the details to the Personnel Committee, details related to salaries and the sworn officer question. Allocating $1 million to Blue Zones, $2 million in addition to affordable housing and $1 million in addition to downtown development incentives.
Two million to affordable housing for a data.
Yeah, he said that.
Okay, sorry.
City Manager Clay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. If I could, just provide some consideration on the referral to committee and I would defer to Councilmember Parlier as the originating motion maker. I, I think that the Personnel Committee has largely addressed high-level policy issues related to personnel and I, and I feel like this one has so many operational and program components. I'm curious if you would be comfortable with it going to Safe Neighborhoods. I think that's a committee where we've talked about some of these programmatic elements and feel like it could be a fit there, but again, defer to the council member.
I'm fine with that. Andre, you sit on that committee too and so is Eric if it's over there unless there's an objection from the Chair of Personnel. I referred it initially to his, his committee, but I don't necessarily see a, a problem there with, with Bruce's recommendations.
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion for the seventh time.
You might have to one more time.
Oh. But that's fine. I'll amend it with the, with the Safe Neighborhoods Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Also for the seventh time, if I could get the chief to come up. And actually, while we're at it, Rick, if you could, if you could join chief. You know, I, I just want to underscore that we have a really unique opportunity right now while we still have some handle on our parks and safety in our parks. And I would like for each of you to kind of, you know, talk about what the consequences would look like of inaction tonight.
Mayor Go, Councilmember Arias. There are, like I said earlier, there's significant public safety challenges across our city and our parks have not been spared that. I, I see this as a real opportunity to begin to, to prevent it from deteriorating further because there needs to be an answer. I mean, our public, and I hear from them daily and heard from some of them tonight, and certainly we do have calls for service daily in our parks. But I see, and if our community decides that they want sworn officers to be in the parks, then I certainly would support that and the more officers, the better. I don't know if this, and, and some of these details can be vetted out, I suppose, but do we get into a, a competition between the police department for sworn officers and Park and Rec for sworn officers? I, I don't know the answer to that and I think it's to be defined in that term. But I do think that this is an opportunity to impact the environment in our parks. Like I said earlier, the, the constant, consistent high visibility has an effect. It has a, a positive effect in those that are not using the parks in the way that they're intended. Will likely, most of them, I believe, will not be in the parks and causing the issues that they have. There's tens of thousands of dollars done every month and damage to our parks. So something needs to be done quickly. And as I said, this is a program that I believe will meet those goals to begin changing the environment. Again, like I said, the actual crime and the fear of crime does significant harm in our community and the parks in particular are where families and neighborhoods gather. And so again, this is, I see it as an opportunity to make a positive impact on that. It is not a perfect solution. There will be incidents when people aren't cooperating and we'll have to respond, but I think by and large, the vast majority of the effectiveness as designed, at least intended and believed in the scope of the park ranger work will come to fruition and I think we'll see some changes in the parks.
Thank you, Chief. Rick?
Thank you, Councilmember Arias, Mayor Go. You know, coming here from the East Coast and being here eight months, it really was a shocker to me to see some of the conditions and to be quite honest, listening to some of the stories, including from my own staff who have a fear in many of our parks just to do their daily jobs. So for me, this is priority number one. I cannot in good conscience not take a, a very serious swing at turning around the tide. And I'm certainly open to discussing some of those solutions, but I think there is, especially in terms of sworn police, I think the majority of the models out there are for having that presence in the park. I had 28 rangers under me in Anarundel County. They were not sworn officers. They were very effective. The problem is if you have sworn officers, there are a lot of things that you deal with as chief mentioned. You will be competing with police. You will have a difficult time recruiting, retaining, and also just the fact of the perception, especially if they're armed, a lot of the communities don't want to see guns inside of the parks. So I think it's, it's certainly important to have eyes on our assets, to have daily patrols, and I do think that it is the, the most effective. Now, I understand NOR, they're a small district, they don't have the issues that we have. If we're comparing ourselves to code, I think our salaries are in line and I do think that we'll have a, a very effective presence out there just with daily patrols and daily and routine engagement in the parks.
Great, thank you. While we still have both of you up here, you know, I think there's been a little bit of gray area or maybe some confusion in, you know, conflating what a sworn officer is going to do when there's a 911 call versus what our park rangers are going to do in our parks. And so I was hoping you two could help clear that up. You know, if, if there is an emergency tier one call, you know, at MLK, what is the expectation? Who is going to be the one to respond if and when we hire up our park ranger staff?
Mayor Go, Councilmember Arias, is the question, what will happen if a 911 call is made?
We get a tier one call, emergency response is needed. Who is going to respond to that call?
If we receive a 911 call or a priority one call at a park, the police department will respond. If a, and Mr. Anthony can answer this, but in terms of the scope of the program, park rangers will have police radios and direct access to us. They can in real time report things to us and if they're requesting assistance, we will respond to them just like we do right now with code enforcement. We have direct contact and radio contact with code enforcement and respond directly to them when they call and ask for assistance.
So it's not that we're losing that capability to respond by implementing this park ranger program?
The police department's not losing any ability to respond.
This is only to complement and to provide additional presence in our parks and to increase positive interactions with families and users of the parks.
Well, one of the reasons I'm supporting it is because I believe that it's going to supplement and reduce the police demand in our parks. Having this consistent, constant, high visibility presence, these, and, and how it's been defined as they're basically ambassadors for the city and out and working actively in the park, I think they're going to have a very positive effect and are going to reduce some of those nuisance, quality of life, fear type incidents that can occur in the park, in the park. It's not a perfect solution. I recognize that and accept that, but I think the benefit is going to be there and will substantially, substantially reduce the call demand for police in the parks.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Just want to say, finishing off on this issue, that, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Parlier that, you know, we, we seriously need to take a look at those salaries. I think that's something that we can do in Safe Neighborhoods and I'm happy to take a deep dive and make sure that, you know, we're within, you know, market range for what we're asking of those, of those park rangers. But I think more importantly, you know, we, over the past year, we've made, you know, dozens on dozens of investments in our parks, right? In every single ward, in fact. And I think protecting those investments, I'm thinking specifically about, you know, the several million dollars we've invested specifically in reimagining MLK Park. Those investments will, you know, we'll only see the fruits of those labors, you know, if in fact we do protect our parks and I think the park ranger program is essential to doing just that. Now, switching gears, I actually had a question, Christian, if you could help me out in trying to understand. I know that we're talking about doing a class and comp study. I know that's coming. And in the one-time funding through the general fund, we're allocating, I believe, 4 million dollars for COLA market adjustments. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, can you help me understand? I'm just trying to understand, why would, why would that be in one-time funding and not ongoing funding if we are planning to increase the salaries over several years for those positions?
It's a great question, Councilmember, because ultimately we do have to account for ongoing funds. The concept here, and I would actually propose something similar at our annual budget processes to actually increase that number because I don't think that that's going to cover all of class and comp. But what it does is for that initial adjustment, it softens the blow and gives us some time to make those plans for the ongoing costs. Also, in, in reflection of the fact that we have one of our three labor partners in a multi-year agreement, but we have two more that are going into negotiations, you know, it gives us an opportunity, again, be prepared, have some funds set aside for both class and comp and other considerations. And again, it gives us some ability to not have that, have a major impact in a year-one budget where we, we don't know what those numbers are going to be next year yet. This sets it aside and helps us buffer that and then, you know, make the long-term plans if we're going to phase into some of that.
That is helpful. And lastly, as it relates to Blue Zones, which I think is an incredible project, and actually want to thank Heather, Amy, Bee and Kiyoshi who have done a tremendous amount of work over the past couple of months in trying to recruit Blue Zones to come to the city of Bakersfield in the first place. And kudos to you for all of the various organizations, CAP-K, the Black Chamber of Commerce, CityServe, Bakersfield College, Adventist Health, just to name a few, who have come on board in support of this project. I think it's important that, you know, we look at health in a more proactive, you know, lens to make sure that, you know, we're actually improving the quality of life for residents. So kudos to the team there. If Councilmember Gonzalez's motion passes tonight and we're only able to allocate 1 million dollars to Blue Zones, do you believe that there are opportunities in the near future to get them up to that 4 million dollar commitment?
Councilmember, I'll, I'll answer that question in a slightly roundabout way, but, but I think ultimately the answer is yes, I believe there's opportunities to provide more funding to Blue Zone projects. So the model for Blue Zones is to create a community collaborative that will identify priorities of the community and I, and then specific initiatives to deliver on the priorities of the community. I think that's been one of the challenges of this chicken and the egg of some, a specific plan is it's supposed to be community-driven. And so I, I think there's an opportunity as a plan is put into place and projects are identified, it may be TOT funding, ATP funding for a bike path. It may be ARPA funding for, you know, gardens as Councilmember Freeman mentioned. I, I anticipate many city projects being consistent with Blue Zones and could be labeled as such as the plan comes together and some other projects coming from the Blue Zones planning process, coming back to council and saying, this is a specific idea. Is it consistent with our goals and funding streams and do we want to fund that specific idea? So I do think, yes, there's opportunities to support specific projects as they're identified and come forward looking for the funding.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think we've hashed the park ranger thing out pretty clearly, so I, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Blue Zones also. Our, our new Public Works Director came from someplace that had the experience, Mr., help me, Strakalos. Would you talk about your experience there a little bit?
Sure thing. Good evening, Mayor Go. Councilmembers, Greg Strakalos, Public Works Director for the record. In Naples, if I recall correctly, it was 2015 when the city passed a resolution to partner with Blue Zones. My participation as we did partner with the Blue Zones was to be involved with the Built Environment Committee where we did identify specific projects along the way that created better mobility for folks within the public rights of way and public facilities. So I participated in that for several years. We, we did identify several projects and we executed several projects in that vein. From an organizational standpoint at the city, we did things in terms of policy changes and there were subtle changes. Things within the snack vending machine changed from candy bars to different types of bars and such. And, and we had competitions where the, the net result was for three to four years, we had consistent health insurance costs for employees across the board. And I know the city reaped some benefit as well in that, that particular area. And just generally from a community-wide perspective, there was a, a sense of, a slight sense of unity amongst things like projects that we were, we were conducting in, in the public right of way. For example, we, we got greater support for some of the things that we were doing in terms of multi-mobility projects. So those were just some of the general things that I recall at this point.
Thank you, appreciate it. I think that one of those things you mentioned is what excites me about it is that the sense of community and the community coming together to work to solve what is, Councilmember Freeman mentioned that we have a crisis in housing. Well, we also have a crisis in health, you know, there's, it is a crisis and for the community to come together and work together in the direction for us to, as the CRC employee mentioned, to, to have our community flourish would be a great thing. And so I'm, I'm committed to the Blue Zones and if it's only, you know, 1 million... And so I'm, I'm committed to the Blue Zones, and if it's only, you know, $1 million now and we figure it out later, then, then that's what it is. But I think it's a great opportunity to have the community come together to work in a very positive way. But if we're horse trading, I want to try. Mr. Freeman mentioned $2 million to housing, and I, and I see on the, the ARPA appropriations, we have affordable housing, $5 million, and the purchased blighted properties, 2.5 million. So if I could talk Mr. Freeman into that, $2 million going towards purchasing the blighted properties, I think that's a, it's a plus, plus, plus to purchase the blighted properties. You get rid of a problem that is a safety problem, a crime problem, you create an opportunity, a space to build affordable housing, and you increase the economic development of the neighborhood all at once. And so I would recommend moving the money there if I can get an agreement. Thank you.
City manager, Clegg.
Just to provide some additional, just straight facts, context around that, that question, as a reminder, we have $5 million in PSVS in the current budget. We have $5 million proposed under ARPA, under mid-year, and we just received $3 million from the Affordable Housing, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from the state. So there are $13 million for the current NOFA. I will agree with Councilmember Freeman, we'll burn through all of that and still have huge needs, but there is $13 million. If this budget is approved with the, the $5 million from ARPA, we would have $13 million for our current affordable housing funding for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Anything further, Councilmember Smith?
Looking for a response.
A response.
I don't know if anything's changed from all the discussion, but my request still holds. I'm ready to vote if you want to get this done without more changes.
Councilmember Freeman, if I just may, so, so your, your concern was the $4 million allocation for Blue Zones. We've reduced that to $1 million. The additional $2 million that we allocated to affordable housing, I, I do see Councilmember Smith's point in that the blighted property acquisition program could help us get more affordable housing units online quicker and also help us with some of the disadvantaged neighborhoods. So I'd like to actually amend my motion to make that $2 million to the blighted property acquisition.
To the blighted instead of affordable housing.
Correct.
Okay. Yep.
All right. Well, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Well, now you know how sausage is made, because this is a long night. I actually don't have any adjustments to the motion. I actually have a very serious request and another request after that. So I was around back when we basically had no OPEB funding, funding. It was, it was ridiculous. And I was a big proponent of getting that funded and making sure it stayed funded, and now, look, we almost have $100 million. But that happened for a reason. And the reason is because we could know every year how much we had to put in to, to cripple that unfunded liability. And I am making a serious request that we set up a plan like that, and we commit to making those payments.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to respond.
Okay.
I think it's a fantastic idea. We are acquiring some new software and consultancy specifically related to pensions that will better help us understand exactly what those numbers are, to give us the data to create a plan to do just that.
Okay. How long is that going to take to get in place?
A matter of weeks.
Can you do better than that? Okay. I have another question, request, and it doesn't apply to the mid-year budget, but we have a, our opportunity zones are funded at a very low level. And I think with COVID kind of running its course and development going on in the city, and I, and I think of what the new mall in East Hills will be like, there's going to be other smaller businesses that are going to need some help and funding to get those projects up and going. So I would like to see that increased, maybe to $7 million, one for each opportunity zone.
Vice Mayor, I'll get, again, on the same page. In that second tranche, Paul Soldania has already expressed interest in, that we think that we could probably spend close to that. And so we had $9 million total in the economic development bucket. We've allocated some of those dollars tonight. I, if I'm doing the mental math right, about $3 million of that. But ARPA, the beauty of it, it's a framework, we can shift some around, and I think as we appropriate the funds for that second tranche as part of the annual fiscal process, we, we could put a lot into the economic opportunity areas.
Okay. Well, I just thought tonight was a good night to bring that up, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Gray.
Well, with all this, I think we're all getting rummy dumb, and we could stumble out of here, and people could think we had a really big party tonight in the council chambers. But I just want to say, first of all, I'm not here, I wasn't, I wasn't, my comments were not made to kill this park ranger program, Mr. Anthony, in any way, shape, or form. I want to strengthen it and be physically responsible, you know, in what we're doing. So that's, that's my heart. As far as Blue Zones, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to kill the project. I think taking it a project at a time, like our city manager was suggesting, so we have something that we can see that where our money is really going right now, it's kind of, was kind of vague, but, so I don't want, want you to leave here thinking that we, you know, totally destroyed what you're wanting to do, but I think it, it needs to be more concise projects, so, and then we can vote on those projects. That'll be fun. And then the last thing, I do have one more thing on this ranger thing that's been in my craw, and Mr. Anthony, if you could answer this question for us, and then let's see what we can do. I noticed that you're allocating $52,000 a truck for the park ranger. That blared at me. Explain why we need to spend $52,000 per truck for a park ranger.
Sure. We kind of analyzed the equipment, both from code and what we really found was that the police service technician trucks were something that was a little more appropriate for the duties that we're asking them to do. So it does include outfitting them with similar technology that the PST trucks have. I'm certainly open, and actually tomorrow, I meet, meet with TS Services to talk about specifically the cost of some of those amenities, so I'm certainly hoping, hoping that we can whittle that down a little bit, but right now, that was more of a ballpark estimate based on some of the specs that we received.
So what's the baseline for the truck without any?
I don't have that in front of me, but I can certainly get back to you about that.
Okay. Because that, that's something I think really needs to be delved down deeper.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Parley.
Thanks, Mayor. So, Rick, you don't have to get up. Stay down, stay down.
I wish I could get up.
You know, it's, it's about taking a concept and making a program better, and I think that's where we're headed. In the end, I think we're going to put some meat on the bone on this program, and I think, I think everybody's going to be happy in the end. I am going to ask that you look at that span and control a little bit when it comes to committee. Also, the 12 to 6 gap, when nobody's going to be out, I think then that's when most of the vandalism probably takes place, during those late night hours. And also, maybe a cross-discipline, strong working group within the city before it comes to committee, maybe really check out different departments or agencies that have both sworn and non-sworn, not just a phone call, but maybe just sending somebody physically to go there and really check out that program. Blue Zones, I'm happy we're supporting that program. We've, we've met, talked more than once. I'm glad we're doing that. And Greg, Naples, wonderful city, spent a lot of time there as a kid, and it's a great place, and we're happy to have you. And like my colleagues have said, none of these conversations, or at least most of them, wouldn't take place without Measure N. And I remember the lean years, when we were talking about two nickels to scrape together, and we're talking about real, real money, the real programs, and it's possible due to the graciousness of our constituents in the city of Bakersfield for Measure N. I want to thank them for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Parley. Councilmember Freeman.
Change your mind?
Okay. Well, I don't see any other requests. City men, uh, city attorney, would you be able to frame the motion, please?
Motion by Councilmember Gonzalez to adopt all the mid-year staff recommendations, as well as the appropriations, with the understanding that the ranger program will be heard in safe neighborhoods. And of the $4 million Blue Zone money, that will be reduced to $1 million. $1 million will then go to downtown incentives, and the other $2 million will go to the blighted property program.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business item 13B, SB 866 and SB 871 regarding COVID-19 vaccine mandates.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Mayor, Council, we're not quite done, but I don't think this is a long item. This was at the request of Councilmember Gray. We have prepared a letter that is consistent with the referral that was made last week for council consideration.
Thank you. Colleagues, comments?
I just want to say again, I think we should be in line with our county to be sending the same letter of our opposition to these two bills, one of which allows a 12-year-old to get vaccinated without parental consent. So I would make a motion to vote on this.
I would like a motion, please, to either approve or deny it.
I can do that. I want a motion to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney, is there a way to bifurcate these two bills? Because I think each warrants an inappropriate separate discussion.
Sure.
Then I would like to make, I don't know if it requires a motion, then I would like to move for a separate discussion and entertainment of SB 866 apart from SB 871.
So Councilmember Gray, do you want to make your motion then as to SB 866 first?
Yes, I want to make a motion to approve SB 866, a letter, you know, to approve the letter.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Colleagues, do you have comments? I don't see any requests, so you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmembers Arias, Gonzalez, and Smith voting no.
Thank you. And now for the next one. SB 871, if somebody wants to speak on it.
Councilmember Gray, would you please make a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve SB 871.
Do we have any comments? Are you trying to? Uh, Vice Mayor.
I'd just like maybe a brief orientation on what's contained in that bill.
Vice Mayor, I'll do my best. This is, the 871 is titled Keeps Schools Open and Safe Act. What, what this would do is not, not require, well, the bill itself would require students attending school to be vaccinated for COVID-19, and our letter that's being proposed is expressing opposition to that requirement.
The bill mandates it, and we're opposed.
Opposed.
Great.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else wishing to speak on that? I see no requests. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. And next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
Colleagues? Nobody wants to sing, dance, or anything like that. Councilmember Gonzalez, you've used up your quote already.
Okay. I'll wait till next week. Mayor, thank you. I received a number of constituent requests and actually public comments via email regarding Mill Creek, and I know staff has been working on some improvements there. Just for the record, Mr. Clegg, or Mr. Strakalos, if you would, wouldn't mind just briefing the full council just on some of the actions that we're taking in response to those public comments?
Yes, sir. In terms of the Mill Creek area, we're currently conducting, conducting an assessment of the downtown core in light of some of these events coming up in the, in the near future, and looking at infrastructure such as streetlights, bollards, some of those same things that are problematic or damaged within the Mill Creek area. So we've expanded the assessment area. We're getting the inventory of the infrastructure, and we are working towards identifying new replacement infrastructure that's designed to be more sturdy and more effective in longevity for the area.
Mr. Strakalos, could you also comment on work that's been done on streetlights during 2021?
Sure. In terms of streetlighting, there, there were some comments and, that we had received some tickets for streetlight outages, both in underpasses and the decorative streetlights and non-decorative streetlights. So our staff went out recently to inventory those lights that were reported as out. We did find that there were two, but the majority had been repaired and corrected earlier. So the two that are out are being worked on to be corrected. Thank you very much.
Mr. Strakalos, along the same lines, I had a constituent call on the same issue at Mill Creek, saying he used to be able to take his children to the park because he could see further and at a greater distance. So I'm wondering whether what you're doing is going to address that. He says something has changed.
It may have been the transition from the metal halide lighting system to LED lights, and the intensity of the LED lights may not have been at the correct lumen as compared to the old lighting system. So, so that is something we can look at in terms of change out for more intense or brighter light out at the park, or more lights themselves.
Thank you. Any other requests? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 10:06.
Wow.[1705.21]